Okay, let's bring, whoops. Oh, no, there it is, it's just light, bring it up, please. Okay, there we go, now I can hear myself, it's a deaf guy. Bring this meeting to order of the Amador County Board of Supervisors, wouldn't mind standing for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, one government, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we just came out of closed session. One A, direction was given. Two A, claim was denied. Two B, claim was denied. Item three A and three B were discussion only. Four A was, the confidential minutes were approved. Okay, we're on to public matters, not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action be taken, any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report and recommendation for possible action at subsequent board meetings. Please note there's a three-minute time limit. Anybody want to talk about anything other than what's on our agenda, come on up.
Thank you very much Chair, Honorable Board. I'm here today just to say some, give you some accolades, I think this is one of the best boards I've seen in a long time.
Thank you.
But also, you have tremendous, a tremendously good staff that supports you. Your professionalism, your demeanor is just, is just outstanding.
You're worrying me.
No need to, what's gonna happen in the near future is, is I'll be selling some property over in Calaveras County to come over here and be with you folks. Most of what I do is in Amador County, you know, the businesses that I frequent, yesterday I was buying tires over at American Tire. Saw Abrams Steinzack, now April, I don't know, she changed her name to, she got married and changed her name, I don't know what the new one is. Jamba Juice, which, which is, you know, she's selling that and gonna concentrate on her, on her husband's business. So, even this morning, I did some business over here, so it makes sense for me to come over here. My father, we, we use Amador Emergency Room, my father passed away a few days ago. Best-case scenario at home, very happy, was able to walk himself to the dining room table and have lunch and nodded off. Even though it was a good experience and the county staff over there, that I knew everybody that showed up from the deputy of the corner to, you know, everybody was very respectful and everything, it was a best-case scenario, he was ninety-three years old.
Wow.
And, and my mother's ninety-five, but she's even, she's in great health. And I want her to be near the medical facilities, I want to be near good government. Had some, we had some problems over there in Calaveras County, let's just say that. We're gonna, we're gonna be talking about your pay a little bit later, you'll, you'll want to hear about.
Sorry for your loss and I'm glad to hear your father left on a good way.
He, he was very happy when he went, he had lived a full life, his contemporaries like Joe Aparicio passed away last year, if you knew Joe over here, the Aparicios. In fact, all the, all the guys over there, all the Aparicio, except for the Chris, the, the one sister is, is gone. So, yeah, his contemporaries left and I miss him, but he left my, he left my mother well off. So she'll be able to live very comfortably.
Thank you, I'm sorry for your loss, anybody else? Okay, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. First by Supervisor Crew, second by Supervisor Cornell, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, consent agenda, is anybody in the public has any? Anything on this? Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, back to the board. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, Supervisor Epperson?
Second.
Supervisor Anneto, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we're on to regular agenda, Amador's Senior Center, presentation by Chris Colton.
Hi, good morning Board, good morning county staff, good to see you all this morning. It's a privilege to report to you what we accomplished this last fiscal year. Just to remind those who, or if it's new information for those who don't know much about our Meals on Wheels program. This program serves the most vulnerable people in Amador County, we have about a hundred and seventeen clients that fluctuates depending on what's going on in their lives. These are, these are services that are offered to homebound seniors who are unable to get out of the house and are vulnerable and socially isolated, so we provide a connection for them every day, providing a hot meal delivered five days a week. And the cost of that meal is a five-dollar participant contribution. The requirements are that an individual is sixty and above and that they are homebound. And the program prioritizes those who are most at risk with regards to health issues, financial condition, and any other risk factors that we look for when we go into their homes. So that's just a reminder a little bit about what the program is. It's vital that we receive not only donations and community support, but we want to thank the, the board for its investment in this program because we couldn't pull it off without you, in fact, the impressive numbers I'm about to show you indicate why. So last fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, which ended on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five, we delivered forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-five meals. Pretty impressive for such a small county. And if you look at the leap from the prior fiscal year, you can see that your investment has paid off in the sense of helping older adults to continue to live and thrive in their homes. And just a reminder, as older adults remain in their homes for as long as possible, they are happier, they're better off. They aren't a burden to the system when it comes to assisted living facilities or Medicare, et cetera, et cetera. So keeping people in their homes as long as possible and helping them live independently is very important for the health of our community and the viability of our community and the dignity of these folks. So quite an impressive leap in numbers and we're committed to continuing to serve older adults in the same fashion. Also, we were able to utilize volunteers this last year, the next slide will show you the number of hours that people invested, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six hours just over. For the year, these are people that volunteered driving, helping us to deliver meals on shortened routes depending upon their schedule. These are also folks who take the time to volunteer in our kitchen, who perhaps who retired themselves and just need that social connection, so they come in, chop vegetables, help us prepare fruit and get it packaged for delivery, so the value of that at minimum wage, if we were to ascribe a wage to those hours, would come out to a little under thirteen thousand dollars in value to the Senior Center and value to the community. So it's quite impressive what, what folks are able to donate to us. And then finally, I wanted to give you little highlights over the program for the last fiscal year. We were able this year to distribute twenty additional, that's twenty per client, additional emergency meals. And these are shelf-stable meals that will last probably two years. And this is to give folks that stability should there be an emergency, like the, can't think of the name of the fire, but recently up country here. That fire certainly caused people to be displaced, in fact, the, the Red Cross used our center as a shelter for them for two nights. So not only do we help on the front end with those shelf-stable meals, we help on the back end with an evacuation center as well. So we were able to distribute those, those meals, we did have one client who unfortunately decided that despite a lack of emergency, thought they'd give them a try, and they gave them two thumbs up, and so we had to bring them more meals because they use their emergency meals on a non-emergency basis.
Is that almost like an MRE, similar?
They're similar to that, they're canned foods, everything's low sodium. Nothing is dehydrated, so it doesn't require water or anything like that, but is, yeah, it's packaged goods, in a sense. We were also able to distribute a little under three thousand pounds of pet food. As I've shared before, we have a pet program that's in connection with this that allows us to provide pet support through a different means of, of funding and a different grant. And so we can support the domesticated pets of these older adults because it's their social connection and their, their value as well and sense of purpose at home. And then we also provided six-hundred-and-fifty-eight hours of friendly visits, so we have older adults who volunteer their time to spend a little more time with clients, whether visiting them in their homes or just providing a friendly phone call to remind them that they're, they're, they're important to the community. We also, during the Meals on Wheels program, anybody's enlistment in that program throughout the year, will receive two in-home visits and two phone calls throughout that year, so every quarter we are in contact with that client from an administrative level to continue to evaluate their needs and to supply them with resources. And of course, with a daily hot meal, our drivers are in contact with those clients every single day, which is really important to help them feel connected. And our most socially-isolated clients always comment that the highlight of their day is when their driver shows up and they don't want to miss that, so they're excited about it. So that's the conclusion of my report and also request to release funds for this year, and I'd be happy to take any questions from the board at this time.
Questions from the board?
Thank you for your service Pastor, thank you.
Yes, thank you, anybody from the public?
Get used to this. This is invaluable, this is a great program, I see the truck pass by all the time. And I've become more aware, driving around, seeing some of the elderly people that don't have family, that don't have somebody to help them, and how important it is to have programs like this. One of the things that, that I do on a yearly basis until this past year was I make care packages. And I give them to people who are displaced by the fires, people that might need, need it during the Christmas holiday. So this, that they provide this, the emergency meals touches me, so I hope you do support and fund this.
Okay, thank you, anybody else from the public? Okay, anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, this is a direction to staff, is there anybody opposed to it? Okay, that is direction to release our funds of thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you Board, appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Honestly, it's, makes all that viable, what I reported on, you're a big part of it, so thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is Amador County Recreation Agency, discussion of possible action relative to potential termination of joint poise, powers agreement and dissolution of Accra and providing any desired direction regarding the wind down of Accra operations. As I was Chair of the Accra, I want to say this death is by a thousand cuts. It's been unfortunate, it started with the closing of the hub so that they couldn't do a lot of child operations. And then trying to find places to do that, the schools closed it down. Then the city started to operate their own pools, which was Jackson and Plymouth. So a lot of the other programs that would have been funded by these operations were having to be cut. And then the fighting with the cities, because they're now trying to figure out exactly what they get for their money. That's been a hard thing to sit there and get around. So we had one of our operations people resign from Accra, so this has kind of left it, the operations in limbo. So, kind of the conversation I've had with Chuck Ely is, we still want to keep all the parks open. We want to still keep that portion of operations cleaned and operational. And that's been a conversation I've had also with Supervisor Cornell. And so we would, the county would absorb Molly Joyce, which is owned by Accra, there'd be a little bit of a trick with that. There's also Lions Park, which is owned by Accra. And then the Fiddletown Park, possibly the Pine Grove Park coming down the, the pipeline. So all these things we need to account for and keep recreation going in the county. And so that's what we're kind of looking at right now. I'm very, it's unfortunate that the Accra has been fighting so hard to keep operations going, but they've done a, the staff there have been doing a great job. And Logan, is there anything you want to add to this?
Yeah, I think you, you characterize it perfectly, I mean, I, I think one of the things we've lost as a community, and there's multiple reasons, but is the idea of regional. And there's a increasing number of people who commute to some of these jobs in prominent positions who've never raised their kids here and don't realize that when your kids play softball, they play in Pioneer, Pine Grove, Sutter Creek, Ione. And everybody just started saying, what do we get in our little entity where our kids share them all? So I just think that was the final straw. I think the reason that our Accra employee resigned was because she was made to feel as if she had to beg for the money that has been agreed upon. And so I think this is, I, from what we've gathered, our, the county can absorb all those responsibilities and, and those parks, we, we can continue to operate exactly how they have been operated, and then each city is, whatever their responsibilities were that Accra has run, they'll have to go back to their own councils and, and discuss how they're going to operate their pools and those things, so I.
Yeah, the only thing is, is that there be some, some programming as far as things that were happening at the, the Veterans Hall, at these classes that we've had around the county that the Accra won't be able to, I mean, the county won't be able to, to handle that portion of it. But we would still, you know, we still want to have the Little League, the, a lot of these other programs. So I want to open us up to the public, unless the Board of Supervisors has anything? Okay, open us up to the public?
And Chris Colton with Amador Senior Center, I was disappointed to see Accra's closure, that's, that's, that's unfortunate. The Senior Center does maintain a presence up country, and we prioritize having localized services for older adults. We run five congregate sites for lunch throughout the county, Jackson being one of them, Pioneer being another, Pine Grove. So we had an agreement with Accra that we would use the Vet Hall, and we use it for our exercise classes and to have a presence up there. Again, for older adults who are able to get out and stay physically fit. At the beginning or end of the last fiscal year, beginning of this fiscal year, we paid for a year in advance to use the facility, so we're a little lost at what's gonna happen.
You still be able to use the operation, this is gonna be now a county, so anything that you'd had in contract and why will just roll right over.
We'll just keep using it, great.
Yeah, the Vet Hall actually is the county facility anyway, so, yeah, operated by Accra.
So then, if administration's taken back over by the county, will it be a point person that we contact and, and deal with?
I mean, that's, all that kind of stuff needs to be, you know, get our stuff together, but, but yes. You know, hopefully your classes wouldn't see any interruption or anything else like that.
Okay, well, if the Senior Center can be of any help in that regard, I'd be open to a conversation about helping to administrate that facility.
And that's, and that's truly what I'm hoping for. If you see a need, something else that the Veterans Hall can provide for you, there's also a smaller building, what we call the Scout Hub, but like Pioneer Park. But any of these county-operated facilities, yes.
Yeah, and I'd continue to like to see a growth for our, our presence up there, so any way I can be of help to county staff in administrating anything, you know, if we were to help administrate that building in the way that Accra did, I'd be open to a conversation.
Yeah, and, and I'm hoping that the Board of Supervisors will keep a committee on this so we can keep a high level of, of operation and, and keeping with staff to make sure that this doesn't fall apart. You know, that's one of my hopes that we keep on doing and keep on going with it.
Great, yeah, because localizing the services is so important for people that live in these more remote areas. And even though our center is in Jackson, a lot of our activities in Jackson, we'd love to see it stretched out and pushed out into these areas. So anything we can do to help that happen, it'd be great.
And that'd be awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to say that Accra did a fine job, and I'm sorry if she felt she had to beg. Albert Schweitzer would say that one of the most valuable things that he learned was how to beg, and he begged all his whole life to help others. I, I'm glad that the, that the county and the Honorable Board has seen fit to continue with any of these programs and, and that Accra had under them. It, it always touches me to see the families that play in the parks and especially up there in Pine Grove where they have a porta potty that I, because I bank right there, I go over there and use it occasionally, so all good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi there, Bradley Booker, Amador Trail Stewardship. We are strongly suggesting that we don't fold it down before we have our stuff together. Because there's a lot of regional and community impact that a JPA can do that the county in unincorporated only won't do. And if we can revisit this to bring meaning to the partners that are in this, it can be a valuable resource and we don't have to restructure and we don't have to absorb county employees that have PERS instead of contracted employees or, right? The situation doesn't have to be, it's not working, it hasn't worked with this experiment we just did, let's close it. Because if the director feels like it's a burden to be part of the organization, to beg for the money that's entitled to them, the board needs to support that, right, the board needs to help those employees to get the funds to run the program, otherwise none of the budget even works if you're not sure the money is there, so I think that there's more than one solution. I think putting, contracting out perhaps core services while you restructure the organization. We put out a, a search for a qualified individual to direct the organization with a track record of success for something like this. We look at the last time that this was successful in the eyes of the partners that were in it and try to revisit those key factors. Amador Trail Stewardship has offered itself to mediate between the cities and the JPA, the supervisors and the JPA, everyone and Accra, to make sure that we hold the most for our community, because if we lose this resource, it's gonna take a lot to enact. And each entity will have less to deal with because of the per capita fees for Sutter Creek don't mean a meaningful line item to a Parks and Recreation Department for Sutter Creek. So they'll be without, or they'll have to raise their rates for their citizens. And same with the county, if we decide that we want to do something, we don't have the joint effort, we don't have the community, and then we're not a region, right? That's really, really important that Sutter Creek and Volcano care about each other and want to connect, right? So that their people can move back and forth and Fiddletown and Plymouth, right? Like connecting our communities together is a really, it's, it's priceless, right? Like if we can get people to move about our cities, then we win. And recreation is a huge draw for people, and Amador is already a desert for recreation access, right? We have less trailheads, we have less trails, we have less multi-use trails, we have less playgrounds and parks. So if we decide that we're gonna look at maintaining what we have instead of growing our future, I feel that there's gonna be a lot lost by the dissolving of Accra. And I would say that we should do what we can to put it in a limp for a little bit while we figure out how to make it strong, but don't, let's not take it out before it's time.
The only thing, Mr. Booker, I think Accra's been kind of in a limping mode for quite a while.
When was the last time the board saw it as a successful entity?
To be honest, it was back in the hub days, you know, where they could use a lot of that, you know, kid entertainment money. I mean, they took a percentage of that and then they can hold other things, but that's part of the, the entities that childcare, and that was just a manner thing, but it's, it's, like I said, it's a, it's a cut-up by a thousand, you know. Accra wanted to do some after-school programs with the schools, there's a certain program that they run with. And they asked, they needed to charge more for fees for those. And the school district put a veto on that because of the programs that they had, so that's, you know, there's just a whole bunch of combination of items that were sitting there. So there's never been a, for a. there. So there's never been a, for a long time, a true, you know, 100%. And with Ione out of the JPA, and like I said, Jackson and Plymouth taking part of their system out and then making it harder for ACRE to use some of their buildings, it just, you know, because ACRE doesn't own any buildings to hold things, to do things. And so that's been a huge problem in that aspect.
I think someone invested in the community can make those partnerships. I think they can show value to the members that say, I want to be part of something that does this. And it, it takes a lot of work to ask the cities, like, hey, why does this not work for you and what would work for you? And then look at whether or not your participation in fees is valuable. But a comprehensive look at this organization can show you whether or not there's viability going for it. But I think just saying, Amy quit, we got to stop, is a little hasty. And I think the county could be at a loss if we decide to do that. And it doesn't go back, right? Like, we're not going to just vote it back in. It's, it's going to take 10 times the effort to bring it back if we cancel it versus review it and really find out whether or not it has legs.
I have another issue in this county. We have five cities. If you go to some supervisors' convention and tell them you have five cities, they all just throw up their hands, like, how could you survive with that? All five of those cities are deeply struggling financially. So I don't even mean to characterize them negatively by saying they questioned their participation there. We, Sutter Creek has to put in a $40 million sewer treatment plant right now that have to divide that cost over 3,000 people.
Yeah.
So it's
But they still have to do recreation, right? So when ACRE's not there, they still have to manage their parks and they have to do programming for their kids.
Correct.
So that having a partnership is valuable to these small cities. Because, right, with the right perspective, they understand that on a rotating basis, improvements come to my area at a greater scale than they would on an individual basis, right? It's better to go together. And if we can all find a way to, right, scale down what happens, because obviously the books are bad, right? It hasn't made money and it hasn't been in a surplus since, I don't know, two directors or three directors ago. But determine what the program is supposed to do. Is it supposed to make money, right? Or is it supposed to provide a service? And then how is it supposed to deliver those services?
That's part of the problem, is it has to do both. It has to be self-sufficient to a point. And that's one of the things that had not been
Well, if the capital fees come in, then it's, it has to go under that, right? Like, the programming and the budget has to be balanced on what is sustainably coming in.
So that's the other problem, it wasn't.
And the problem with the impact fees too, I understand, right? Like, there was agreements with the cities and some weren't making payments and no one followed up. And it's been decades and it's, right, now we've got tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars that are either due or were due. And so I do agree that it's in turmoil, but I don't, I don't think that folding it is the best solution for the county, especially if we look at it as a region and community and cooperation instead of isolating our cities.
So it's not all bad news, though, because through this, we've had to reassess things. And there's things like at the Nexus Study, and we've discovered that it's possible we could rewrite it and use those impact fees for capital maintenance. So there's, I see the potential that our parks can improve through this process.
Would that be capital improvements instead of maintenance?
Capital.
I think that was the little twist of word. Wasn't it Greg?
Glenn.
Capital improvement.
Greg, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, we still need to face forward and build parks and build recreation facilities and not just maintain. And my
Well, we could start with maintenance. I mean, if a basketball hoop got knocked over years ago and we just can't get it back up, it's just, we could start with maintaining what we have and
I agree that it's important on both aspects, but I caution against canceling the future-forward thinking of recreation opportunities for our county, both in programming for youth and seniors and for recreational facilities throughout the county. And we will, again, we're here for any discussion, we're here for help. We've got planning funds to look at this and find out if there's viability in the program, but we
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, back to the board. This is kind of a discussion and direction for the ACRE representatives to go back with. And any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I was serving the board for a dozen years and chaired it for a year. I know that it's always been a struggle. I mean, it had, has its usefulness, it's trying to figure out how to wind it down now. And if we can incorporate some of these thoughts that are out there and how that, the JPA dissolves is going to be a little more of a process, I think. I think it'll probably take us probably at least six months or something, I would suspect, with getting through all the other cities, other partner agencies, and then how to figure out, to get a full counting of properties and all the other contracts that are out there. I think that's probably all the information gathering that probably needs to be done first as we proceed.
Supervisor Neto?
No, I think it's, I don't dislike the concept. I think ACRE struggled for a long time. It's, it's like, City of Ione's really, hasn't been a member for, for a long time, has it?
No, two, three years.
Maybe they're a member, but they're, basically, they're in there and out the table.
It took us, took me five years, I think, to get them to pay full fare. They were paying half for a long time. Of course, we were going bankrupt at the time, early on. We paid full for a while, and then I left council like three years ago, and they cut them off shortly thereafter.
Yeah. So I think probably, I don't, I don't think the benefit's there for, it's not operating well. And I think there's been a lot of people trying to get it to run. I think when Tracy Towner was here, she worked real hard on it. I think probably made it go to a certain degree, I mean, through sheer willpower. But since she's left, it's, and it's even struggled under her some, I think. Since she's left, it's had a lot of issues.
You know, Carolyn did a good job. I mean, she kept the books tight. We knew where everything was at. The programming has always been a problem. We would train talent, lose talent. I mean, some of the events that really funded it, like you say, the Hub was definitely one. Then they did the triathlon out there at the lake, and that would bring a lot of outside people. That actually would bring in a pretty good income. The pools have always been back and forth, struggling one way or the other. I mean, like, in Ione, our problem is we have a lot of programs already being done by the local citizenry and some of the other local groups. And so there wasn't a lot of bandwidth there. And that was always kind of the issue. It's like, how do you bring in the hard money to actually underwrite the program to keep it steady? And that's, that's been a very challenging bit of that whole equation all along. I mean, since I was on with Tracy was there, and a lot of that was funded by all the big projects she did with the management costs, you know, that kind of thing. And no, it's been tough. I think we got to figure out what, where the value is and how we preserve that. And then we'll see what the future holds, I guess.
Okay.
Winds down.
So, Raja Kru?
Well, I think we're at a point that it's very hard to have a joint powers agreement with partners when you have at least two or three very reluctant partners.
Yeah.
For whatever reasons, and I'm not saying they're wrong, but the idea of restructuring, maybe a timeout until we can really reassess, you know, just, instead of just taking a snapshot, really look at, is there a way forward? And I think if everybody paid full fare, it's still only about a 30% chance of accomplishing a lot. So you'd be, how would I say this? You'd be confusing activity with achievement. And I think we've done that about as long as we can. Well, you guys sit on the board, so just an outsider looking in.
No, that's, that's a fair, you know, statement. As we're, we have been trying our best to keep everything going, but it's just, it's just been a rolling stone down the hill. Director Cornell, you have, I mean Supervisor Cornell? I'm sitting there reading my
I don't think the dissolution of this is giving up. But the way ACRE was surviving was with programs that had limited attendance. And I just, I've gotten to the point in my life, I don't, I just, we shouldn't be doing CPR on things that aren't effective. We should just rethink the entire way that we do it. And I have actually high hope with the Nexus Study and with Diane, who's been caring for all of our parks for so long, she'll actually get benefits. I mean, she'll have an employment. And yeah, I think the opportunities are endless to do greater things when we're not hamstrung by trying to provide smaller programs that have the attendance of five or six. We had two people sign up for the October fall event that used to be highly
Which we used to have 2530.
2530 and two people signed up. So it's, it's not just the cities, it's the public. And a lot of those programs have been offered by other entities. So after-school programs, there are other entities that are doing that. There are other entities running some of these sports leagues. So a lot of those things exist, they're just being done by other people. So I think we have the opportunity to focus ourselves on the parks and not those other things, and then figure out a way to have, use the money that we have to do greater things. And also, the way ACRE dissolves is, if a number of entities, if a majority of the entities decide not to be a part of it, it dissolves anyway. And I think that's where we're at. I think all those cities are going to come back and say they want out. And so it's dissolved just by attrition.
So the committee needs direction to bring back to the ACRE board? So what we're looking for is to keep ACRE or unfortunately let it dissolve?
I have a question on that process too. I talked to councilor yesterday, but so the member agencies, I didn't, pardon me, I have not well-versed in like the, so membership before was like you pay or you don't, and you're still kind of a member. But if you stop paying, that was always a question with Ione or early on, was that we were, we were going bankrupt. And so they gave us a break, we're paying like half fees and no fees, well, then half fees and full fees, allowing us to participate on the board. Later on, they got off the board, I believe. And then, so when, and I'm not sure how that actually went down in the city-wise, I wasn't at that meeting. But so as each member votes to pull out, and that's not just funding, it's actually withdraw from the JPA, how does that look with property and everything else? Do they have to make a bunch, a bunch of decisions before the thing's finally over?
Yeah, so I, I wouldn't want all the members to formally withdraw, because once they formally leave or, or sort of terminate their participation in the agreement, then we lose members and then potentially ACRE just ceases to exist for that reason. But ACRE needs to continue to exist to do the winding down of its, its
Well, amortize out all the funds and then, you know, to sit there and transfer the property names.
They're holding whatever membership fees that have been paid by the members will need to be accounted for and distributed in proportion to their contribution. The impact fees that ACRE is holding will need to be accounted for and distributed back. ACRE owns two parks, which presumably will get transferred to the county since they're in the unincorporated area. ACRE, the ACRE board would need to do that. So the ACRE board needs to exist long enough to take those formal steps. And then, and then once all that's done, then, then everyone can formally, you know, ACRE can terminate at that point.
Right.
So the official membership now, as it stands, I mean, participating or not, is it all five cities still and
No, Plymouth, I mean, Ione formally withdrew
Okay, that's what I thought.
A couple of years ago, a year ago.
Right. Yeah, you have to, okay. So it's just the four cities and the county currently.
And the school district's a member, but they don't contribute.
Right, yeah, they have a member on the board, I know that, right. That's cool. They contributed, used facilities, that kind of thing.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Okay, so still looking for direction?
What, I don't know, what direction do we need? Do we need to
Well, it just, you know, I guess just acknowledge that ACRE needs to wind down and for staff, you know, for the ACRE board members to go back and direct their staff, the ACRE staff to sort of do, take those steps, the accounting, the sort of get ready to disperse the winding down, the termination of any agreements they may have that are outstanding. Just all those things that need to be taken care of before ACRE formally closes its doors.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we begin the process of dissolution based upon council's direction.
So do we need a motion or should be just direction?
Either way is fine for today. Can we add the caveat that if a miracle takes place, we can come back and
Hey, it happened. I'm with that, yeah, sure. I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, yeah.
So is that your rebuttal to the motion?
No, I agree with the motion. I just, I just
I mean, you can add to his
Amendment, yeah, I
Amendment is, like, we begin dissolution and, and if
Entertain, restructure.
Entertain, re, never, don't give up till the, we have not yet, yeah, John Paul Jones type.
You accept that on the motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll
So, change was Supervisor Cornell's, the motion has changed with Supervisor Cornell's adjustment. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. That's, this is a hard one. This is absolutely a hard one, because I've been, as most people know how much I've tried to work up at Pioneer Park to get that park recognized again. And then it's all our parks, you know? We have a pickleball courts going into Fiddletown and Pioneer Park. We've been, has been working very hard. I was hoping to get it in this year, except some silly jail has been keeping our staff busy, so. And a certain member of facilities, I won't mention names. So hopefully those will go out for bid in March. Okay, I got a thumbs up on March. And so we'll, we're working on those. So now we go on to 5C, General Services Administration presenting regarding new public project website and contractor registration form. Come on up.
All right. So this presentation is just to help get the word out. We've got a new registration form for contractors. We're trying to encourage everybody to sign up. We've already posted notice in the newspaper. We sent word out to the trade journals. We did a press release, which I understand went on the county's Facebook page. And those press releases, I understand the Ledger picks up. And underneath all of our facilities emails is a, is a note and a link to the registration form. So we're really just hoping, encouraging everybody to get out. And I just kind of, I just want to walk the board and the public through some of the changes on our website. So I'm going to sit over there with Heather. There we go. Okay. So let me see if I can get that mouse going. Okay, general services. It's broken down into two categories here now. One is our public construction, this one, and then one is goods and services. So that the public can hopefully have this simple breakdown. All the sub-tabs here, we've got our policy. So if you want to take a look at the policy, it's right there now. Second tab is the, what does that say? Registration form. So this is where contractors come to fill out their form. And they can, they have different categories depending on their specialties and what they're licensed in. And then, once they fill this out, then they are on the contractor list. And this contractor list is what the county will use now to, to email, get the word out on projects. Virtually any project that's, certainly every project that's over 75,000 and where it makes sense, projects that are under 75,000, we're going to email out to this list and, and encourage people to bid on them. And also, this is designed in a way to be user-friendly for the public. So as a member of the public, you want to get a contractor for your own home project, you can see you can see what their field of specialty is and you can you can figure it out real quick. And then there are other categories here, that's guidance for local contractors. So a lot of the pushback we'll get from contractors who have trouble working on, working with the counties and public projects, is they don't know how to do certified payroll, the bonds, the insurance. So what we've done here is we've put this guidance together, and uh and this will give you a list of some local businesses that can help you do certified payroll. And um and the same with insurance and bonds, so you can just reach out to somebody and hopefully get that resolved right away. And then you'll need to register for, with the DIR, and that's part of the certified payroll. And so we're we're trying to make it as user friendly as possible and and trying to encourage local businesses. And um and then you've got, you see the other ones here, the terms and conditions, so now now a contractor, if they're trying to work with the county, they can just go to one spot and figure it all out. Those are the main main pages I wanted to show.
Ultimately, the purpose of all that is to to make it easier for those who don't know how to work with us, particularly local contractors that want to come work with the county and uh make it easier for that to happen.
Yeah, so uh now we are officially up and running, um so this is a message to everybody, encourage anybody you know who's a licensed contractor to come register on our site, and the more the merrier. And that's, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah, it's important to keep our locals employed, and I appreciate the fact that we're making a real effort to reach out to them, that's that's really good, thank you.
Yeah, I will, I like that you have a list of open bids, because I do some contracting, sometimes you go on these websites and trying to find their RFPs or RFBs, I don't know if it's intentional or just um a lack of capability, they're almost impossible to find. And you go through everything they have, they don't list, and yeah, so it's nice it's listed, um I like the outreach of local contractors, um I guess that's a good thing. I think we also did some of uh, we changed some of our procurement policies or some of the small items, we can do more informal.
Yeah.
That might be helpful, I think that's helpful too.
Yeah, we um, just to reiterate, with our public construction um policy, now anything up to seventy-five thousand, we've got a lot of flexibility just to reach out to people informally and also to do them in-house. And um and so the the regulations require that we reach out to people on this list beyond seventy-five thousand, but of course, price is our number one guide always, so where it makes sense, we're going to reach out to to people and ask for bids on those projects under seventy-five thousand as well. And we also updated our purchasing policy, so that that's also a threshold of seventy-five. So once you hit seventy-five thousand, you gotta go out to formal bid for goods and services. And um and we've also raised the the small amounts so that the departments within the county, fifteen hundred dollar purchases don't need to come through GSA to bog down the process. We will have some oversight, but it's not as as um as burdensome as it was before. And then for Public Works, it's three thousand dollars, which has been really, really helpful for them.
Thank you, sir.
I wanted to say one thing, I I don't think it's hyperbole, but preachers and politicians are known for that. I think if this takes hold, I think history might reveal this is one of the most preeminent factors in boosting our economy. Just watched my whole life as we just cut trees and build roads and build buildings, and we just contract people from outside the community, and we just hand them the check that came from the state, and we don't tax at one time, it doesn't go around our community, it doesn't sponsor one soccer team. And I've just been told that it's it's just the way it is, it's just the bid process. And Glenn, I think you went over into that office, and I think you dug around until you found a way, and I just think you should be highly commended for it, that's.
Well, thank you, appreciate that.
Well, this this is not the only thing you've dug up over there, and I truly appreciate everything you've done and, you know, stepping your office forward to help outside this building.
Well, thank you, and I actually, and I look forward to working on the ACRA stuff. And I think that that, I I think it's gonna um be a smooth transition.
I hope so.
Yeah.
One more thing, I forgot to say, there's towns all over Nevada that we call them ghost towns now because they had a mine, and the mine shut down, and then the town went away, or they had a mill, and the mill shut down, and the town went away. We don't have a freeway, we don't have industry, unfortunately, I don't know what it means about whether we're still a republic, but the county is the industry in our county.
Yeah.
And so to spend that locally and have it bang around, again, I think the history's gonna reveal this to be something great. I think you've done a very good job, and I have complete confidence in the direction you're going, your abilities, so.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Alrighty, thank you all.
Anybody have public comment on this?
Just a applause, we'll do.
Got a thumb up from KVGC. Anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. So we go on to five D, Public Health Presentation, Upcoming Health and Human Services, Open House.
Yes. Good morning, and thank you all for having us come out today. We appreciate the time to be able to share a neat opportunity and event that's coming up. My name is Stacy, and I'm with Public Health, and this is my counterpart.
Melissa with Behavioral Health Program Coordinator, good morning.
We've started working together on a couple of joint projects so that we're really utilizing a lot of our resources and not reinventing the wheel, so to speak. And something that came up over and over again was resources, what is available to the community? So what we decided, and we sat down with our directors, is to come up with an open house for the HHS building. So on October twenty-eighth, we're going to open our doors, and Melissa's gonna tell us a little bit more about the open house while I hand out some flyers to y'all so you can join us.
Yes, so this open house, our theme is open doors, open possibilities, which really reflects our commitment to accessibility, inclusion, and innovation, and ensuring every community member knows that help and opportunities are available to them. All of our partners within House and Health and Human Services will be participating, and it really highlights our collaboration between Public Health, Behavioral Health, Social Services, Veteran Services, to serve our residents at every stage of life. We, visitors will have an opportunity to meet our staff working directly in programs and learn how to access the services that are available, that promote physical health, mental health, housing stability, family support. And we just really invite the whole community to show up, come and meet us, learn more about our programs and services. We'll have childcare available, I know that's a factor for many parents in getting out to access an event like this, and we will have food available. So we're really excited, and thank you all for the opportunity to spread the word about this event.
Yeah, don't downplay the food. It is Tuesday, so we're gonna do Taco Tuesday at HHS. So we're hoping that y'all can join and share out with folks. We want these resources to get to everybody, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, any public comment? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, cool. We're on to five E, Administrative Agency Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Salaries of Elected Officials in Amador County. In your agenda, um Supervisor, I mean Supervisor Chuck, Eily and I came up with, just so we could go apples to apples, because we're both talking about ourselves.
And Kim.
What?
And Kim.
And Kim, yes, Kim was the, Kim's the one that actually did it, she, so that's the funny thing. So we wanted to make sure, you know, so much of the time we get, we don't get actual costs, we don't see the actual amounts and everything else, so we uh we came up this simple folder. If anybody has any ideas of changes on it or anything else, you know, if anybody of the electeds come back down the road, we want to see all the stuff, you know? So this shows SEIU, this shows what we've given across the board differences, and uh and so our um our our amounts. Does any of the board of directors want to talk about this? I'm Board Supervisor, just give me.
The uh, the ordinance is in there based on what the direction that was given to staff at the last board meeting, so um you can go forward with it as, with any changes as you choose or uh not, and I believe we've got three of the elected officials here that can answer any questions if you have any.
The um, the only thing that wasn't clear in the direction from the last meeting was the the start date, the whether it was retro, since the request was um since the request by the electeds was for it to start on the does it say, the twenty-eighth?
Of September, which is the same date that all the other units started.
So it would take sixty days to, yours, the supervisors would take sixty days for the ordinance to become effective, but the increase would be back to September twenty-eighth, which is when all the other employees got their same adjustment.
All of the electeds would wait sixty days too?
The electeds, ordinance goes into effect after thirty days, after the second, thirty days after the second reading, but would still, when it goes into effect, would.
Would still be retroactive till the twenty eighth.
Yep.
I knew there was something different.
Yeah.
Back to the board, any, Miles is gonna go after.
Actually, Supervisors, I'm sorry, the the ordinance that's drafted for yours does not include a start date. It doesn't include a retro date, so if you want that included, you should um make that adjustment now. Otherwise, it would go into effect uh upon the sixty days.
Yeah, I thought, I think we talked about that as like January first, you know, with the timing of all this.
That would be for yours, but the, since the request from the electeds was to be retro to September twenty-eighth, that's what their ordinance says.
Any conversations about this?
Oh, I might have something to say.
Yes, sir.
I just like being the fly in the ointment. I, we had this huge budget crisis, and last week I was at this amazing meeting with ACTC where they're completely rethinking the way they do everything, and we're actually possibly discovering a way to pave roads for like one-sixth of the cost. We just saw Glenn in here completely rethinking the way we do bids. I was just hoping before we did this, we had way more honest conversations like that, where we could set our egos aside and set the battles between the different budgets aside, and we could talk with, about the effects of the prison and the jail, and we could talk about how we invest our money, and I just, I wanted all these conversations that we could display publicly, that we're like assiduously toiling away at correcting what got us to the problem of the deficit. And I think this is gonna pass, which is great, I just would almost want to promise that we're gonna have these, continue to have these types of conversations. And I realize that everybody else got the raise, but I just, I know I'm new here, but I don't see electeds as the same as the employees. I think we are the people. And I think our people are a little demoralized, I mean, we're spending six hundred thousand dollars per bed over at the jail. There's, they're watching the money go out, and they're wondering when somebody's gonna fight for them, so.
One thing, I I will say on the jail though, Logan, I was in that fairly early on, I mean, really wasn't too happy about building the jail, but the problem we had, we're looking kind of, okay, we've got a jail, we have a state that's um, a state that's all in taking care of inmates, not so much citizens, and if we got the wrong inmate with the right judge, um a judge is gonna say, you have to do yada, 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 yada to that jail, and you gotta do it now. As it was, we got like about seventeen million dollars of grant money to make our jail a lot more, I guess you'd call it compliant. We did get sued by a neighbor, which ended up putting us out of the black into the red, because she delayed about five or six years and cost five or six million dollars additional. So I have heartburn over that, yeah, the the cost is pretty insane, part of that's a lot to go back to state. I will say where I do have some heartburn over is, you know, it's, our roads are not fixed. I don't mind paying an adequate salary, I understand we have a lot of good elected officials, they do a lot of good work, a lot of good employees overall, but still, the roads aren't fixed, it's, it goes back to that. I understand we can't fix the roads in the back of a few elected officials, or we can't fix roads in the backs of employees, or we can't fix roads in the backs of this, but if we kind of try to cut back some, we get more money towards the roads, I think elected officials are paid pretty well um overall, they do a good job, like compensation's adequate. And I think it's, part of it's, I think elected officials over the years have probably been, if you look at some of the numbers, they probably lag behind employees as far as what they receive versus employees. I just get down to, I look at the roads, I think that pays pretty well, and also, I've been the private sector for a lot of years. Not saying it's necessarily right, not saying it's wrong, I know what my healthcare was as a kid growing up, even as a young man. It was called, don't get hurt, heal fast. Now, that's not very palatable to a lot of the public, and especially to a lot of people in public employment, for like public agencies. But that's what a lot of people out there right now in this community have, they have, you know, don't get hurt, heal fast, or they go in and they gets paid free at the hospital, and whoever has insurance or has the money makes up the difference. So, and I know what the public, the public sector in Amador County pays, a lot of jobs don't pay that much. So I mean, I think it's pretty adequate where it's, the salaries are where they're at, and that's, that's my piece.
Want to reiterate, I think people should be paid for the work that they do, and they should be paid appropriately. I'm not disputing that these raises should take place. And I guess, as it has been explained to me, this is the normal, natural timing, so I just uh I guess I'll be quiet.
I'm in favor of it, I mean, I think raises are expected, no matter what line of work you're in.
Of course, we have two subjects here, one is the electeds, and then the second is us. Um, I think, I think this board has tried to kept this budget down as much as possible, but like myself, I don't have a second job to run my income. I do have my retirement from the the military, but that is only so much. And it's just for me personally, it's the cost of what our insurance has been doing, and the PG&E, it's just a hard portion of that, that I have to sit there and watch my own budget, so um I'm I'm in favor of it, I mean, it's, you know, as I see on this sheet, they'll, it'll be um, you know, a a raise of two hundred dollars, you know, a little bit lower. So it's, you know, it's not a huge thing, it's not for us. The electeds, you know, um, the other electeds are, you know, in, have been working as hard as they can, they don't have second jobs. That is the one thing that the Board of Supervisors is always kind of an interesting thing, is some of us have had second jobs, and some of us have other income, so it's, it's a wild thing to run with, because we're all independent, you know, we're all, how we all, you know, have done our things in our, in our lives to get us to this point. to get us to this point. Um, Supervisor Crew, did you have anything?
No, I said my piece last night.
Okay. Anybody from the public?
Honorable Board Chair, um, I'm going to only talk about your pay, the board of supervisors. And, um, I come at this with a jaundice eye. I mean, I've been dealing with Calaveras County and their supervisors are paid $86,000 a year and the chair is paid $102,000 a year. They have a CEO, so they don't oversee the departments. Uh, they don't answer, uh, their telephones. They, um, all of them have second jobs or other income. Uh, and some of them work at their second jobs while on the dais. Um, I found this out by doing Public Records Act requests. Um, so they, uh, made the choice a few years ago to continue with this very high pay. And a couple of weeks ago, they again, uh, decided to continue with it, but to make a change. They're going to base it on the, uh, judge's salary, the superior court judge's salary. Now, I don't know if your county council knows this, uh, but, um, uh, there's a lawsuit, uh, where a superior court judge is suing California Human Services saying that they're being grossly underpaid. Uh, they're paid $244,000 a year. And I believe they're being underpaid when you take into consideration what, uh, what you make in the private sector these days as far as the legal profession. Uh, top rated law firm, you could see a partner getting, charging $3,000 an hour. Um, a lesser law firm, if you're a, uh, if you're an associate, a, not a partner, uh, you get, uh, you bill close to $400,000, uh, $4,000, $400 an hour. Um, so they're going to say, well, the cost of living, especially in a, a city like San Francisco, Sacramento, San Diego, Los Angeles is much greater. So we need to be paid a conserv- conservatively amount more. And I can see this lawsuit succeeding. I can see them having their pay 50 to 100% increase on their pay, meaning you would get 50 to 100% increase in your pay, uh, based on your 35% uh, of a judge's salary. So what I'd say is.
You mean that?
Your, your percentage based on.
Those supervisors, not these ones.
According to the, according to what it said, yours.
That was set up in what?
We, we, we killed that.
You killed that?
In 2018.
2018, okay. That's what I read in your board packet.
Yeah, so that, that was what used to happen, but the biggest reason we did that is there were some lean ears that we were, as a county supervisor.
Yeah.
And the one thing we didn't want to do is get a, didn't want to get a pay raise if I'm telling everybody else, no.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I commend you for that. That's a good thing. Um, yeah, that was based on what I was, uh, reading in your, in your packet just a while ago.
Now that was, you know.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you, I'm glad you killed that.
Now, it does show when that, it's, it, it quit in 2018.
Okay, that's fine. Let me, if you don't mind, I'm going to continue, uh, with this. I am very impressed with this board of supervisors. Uh, you come prepared. You, you read your packet. Doesn't, doesn't often happen in Calaveras County. Uh, you, uh, you know, and they're, they are planning, I mean, to base it on a judge's salary. Um, they don't do their research. Even the county council, she, she's not very good. I'm sorry to say.
Well, this is Amador, so let's just keep on Amador.
Amador County has a very good county council from what I've, from what I've seen.
I think so.
I, I'm glad. He, yeah, it sounds like you have at least one-fifth of job security there.
I think he's got five-fifths.
So, so I do, I do support your, your increase in pay. Now, I did get quite a few, because I sent out a general email that includes residents of Amador County as well, and I got some responses. And what they were upset with was that you do set your own salary. And I can tell you here that they, the public has recourse. And, you know, be, between now and when it becomes effective, they can petition for, uh, they can petition for reconsideration from the board. They can, uh, they can put on, they can put on the ballot, uh, what your salary is. It was already decided, the courts have already decided that that is legal for, for, uh, for the citizenry to, uh, pass an ordinance, uh, with term limits and either separate or together, uh, a salary for board supervisors and elected officials. That's, that, that's a completely allowable and the public has that option. Uh, they can recall you. Recalls are very difficult these days. You know, collecting those signatures is over $7 a signature now for, to collect a signature, uh, if you, if you hire a professional, professional to do it. So, uh, they have an uphill battle in that respect. Um, they have recourse and if they see fit, they can, they can take that recourse. That is not, uh, that is not a criticism of you. I support you. I support this, uh, this meager pay increase. Um, I understand where you're coming from and it's been a long time since I've had the pleasure of dealing with a professional board, so.
Thank you.
That's what I have to say on this matter. Um, I commend your staff.
Thank you.
Chuck Hay just had a performance evaluation. I see and I see you passed. Very good. So I'll leave you with that today. I have to, I have to get back up the hill. I do. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else from the public?
Yes.
I'm just curious as to what this, the total increase to the budget would be, so I don't have to do the math in terms of particular, the raise, it both in terms of.
I don't think I had the fiscal, fiscal total.
You made the dollar total?
Yeah.
I gotta, I'll throw that over. Kim, where are you? No.
I had that last board meeting. I don't know if I, the supervisors, yeah, I.
It was like 16,000 for the supervisors and. For the year or for the amount of time?
Can be rough.
I think that's what I saw on the last sheet.
Yeah, that's.
Kim to the rescue.
80,000 maybe?
The board?
Yes.
No. Yeah, yours was. I didn't, I, I didn't bring it to.
They're easier because of the fewer of them. They're all doing the same thing.
Far less than half, so.
Okay, that, I just wanted a, a rough estimate.
I'd guess 75, 80,000. That's just a guess.
Not for the.
Less than 20.
That's for everybody.
Yep. We get paid one-third of the amount, so it'd be one-third.
Sorry, we didn't have that answer for you right off the bat?
Chuck's working.
Chuck can get to, get that to you.
I don't get paid enough to do that kind of math.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Okay, he's back to the board. Oh, Zoom, anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay.
One thing I will say, just kind of a caveat, um, look at the numbers, compare the other staff, elected officials are, like the electeds, they're down probably 10, 15% from the other, like employees. Board's probably down 15, 20%. Um, so it's not, I, I won't say it's not warranted, but I just, my issue is I just look at our roads and a couple other things, so.
Okay, so anybody else?
It is about $20,000.
Yeah.
Total for the five of you. Five percent raise.
Well, that's, that's just the five supervisors, not everybody.
Just the five supervisors.
Five supervisors.
That's what I thought the question.
Okay, I'll.
$47,000 from your last, without us.
Okay, so we'll separate this out in case there's mixed feelings. First thing, I, actually, I kind of want to know from the board, this type of information that we received, is that something in the future do you want to see?
It's very helpful.
Okay, so there's that direction to staff. Um, first is looking for a motion for the, uh, the other electeds, not the board of supervisors, uh, for their pay raise or not. So do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Supervisor Epperson. Do we have a second? Okay, Supervisor Crew, seconds. Call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Was that a nay over here too? Okay, so that needs to be a four-three?
That's, that's a fail.
That passes.
That passes, okay. Okay, for the supervisors, do I have a motion to approve their, uh, supervisors' pay raise?
Do we have to put the retro in there?
For the supervisors, yes.
Put an effective date of Sept- of September 28th.
Yeah, on a point, point of order.
Oh, okay.
On the packet, on the board of supervisors, item of general report, it says four fifths vote required. It says no, so that means.
No.
Which is a simple majority.
Look at that.
Very good, okay. All right, so make sure.
Okay, so the September 20, um, Supervisor Epperson, will you amend your motion to make sure that it goes back to, or do you want September 28th as the?
Uh, I'm fine with, with going to the date of, date of request.
Okay, September 28th, okay. Supervisor Crew, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. And then, uh, board of supervisors would be the 1st of January, if that's kind of way I read it, because of the, the ordinance and everything else.
The, the ordinance for the electeds has the retro included.
Okay.
The ordinance for the supervisors does not. So if you want it to have that same September 28th date, you'll have to add it.
I'm open for either, myself.
I'm going to vote no, but I'd make it the same date.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Supervisor Crew makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll make the second.
Okay, we have a second. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excuse me.
Did you say nay or?
I'm a nay, I'm a nay.
And then, uh, nay?
I'm a nay.
Okay, so does that need to be a, that's not a, okay.
Clarification. Reason, the reason, the reason is September. I just like dates the same, so simpler to.
I understand.
Then you voted against it for us. You guys running for office or something? Is that one I don't know about?
Actually, no.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to wait. That's all I wanted, just not right now.
I understand.
So just, just to be clear, your motion included the retro for the supervisors? Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that passes. So now it'll come, come back on consent next meeting.
Yep, waive the reading and bring it back on consent.
Okay.
The next meeting.
Okay, pulling teeth. 5F, discussion of possible action relative to response of the board of supervisors to the 2025 Amador County jury report.
Supervisors, this, uh, this is the response that, uh, we are actually a little tardy on and it's my fault and I apologize. Um, but bringing it back to you.
We just have to not let you go on vacation anymore.
No more vacations. That was why. Um, it is here now. Uh, it's unusual that I would, uh, phrase a response to say no to everything that they've recommended, but I have here. Uh, I don't disagree with, with a lot of the observations that they've made, uh, about our road system and the, what needs to be done, uh, as far as repairs to the roads. Uh, I think I just disagree with, um, with how they go about doing it. Uh, I think a lot of what the, the recommendations they do are really just, um, more government on top of government. And, uh, like Supervisor Cornell was saying earlier, we need to find ways to do things without so many studies, without so many, uh, reports, without so many layers of government, um, to strip things away so that we can do them cheaper. Uh, and, um, that's ultimately why I, I crafted the responses that I did. Um, of course, you are free to, uh, change anything you would like to change. Uh, ultimately, I do agree with the sentiment that we need to do things differently. And, um, we are in the process of trying to figure out how to do those things differently.
Well, isn't Martin Road one of those?
Martin Lane, yes.
Martin Lane, excuse me?
Is one of those, uh, roads that are, um, that we are putting a chip seal on. Uh, we actually have a, a proposal that we need to talk about, um, to, uh, to put a fog coat on top of it. Uh, and maybe we'll do half of fog coat, a fog coat on half of the road, uh, just to see how it wears and to see, uh, uh. See what the finished product is and, uh, to understand what, uh, what we're, we're looking at that's different. We can't continue building things to the, the highest level. And, um, this is, this is a good example of, of how you do things to a slightly lesser level. Um, how lo- long, what's, what's the cost of that? How long does it last? Uh, is always a question that must be asked. And are we prepared to accept that trade-off? Uh, the other trade-off is that we only get, you know, three roads done a year versus, uh, six roads done a year. And, um, i- is that, is that acceptable? So that's what we have to figure out, but we are, we are looking for all options we can bring to the table. So, um.
No, I'd agree with a lot, a lot of what you said, Mr. Eylee, but I will say, I think this grand jury was very well intentioned and conduct themselves very professionally. One shortcoming, I think it was huge in the report, was they're saying all these things need to be done or more need to be done in roads, and I agree implicitly. Um, they didn't give us any recommendations where we could get money other than looking for grants or whatever, which I think the county's doing, have been doing more of that, um, by quite a bit. And a lot of the grants, a lot of them you find, it's, a lot of the grants are there for nefarious stuff. You don't kind of, it's, the grants are almost never for meat and potatoes. They're for, you know, putting in umbrellas and top of the salad or, you know, you don't want to, you want some, you want some meat and potatoes and the grants don't do that. Um, and a lot of, a lot of the recommendations were probably not bad recommendations. They're going to take more time away from the roads and more money away from the roads to go out and, yeah, I want meat, potatoes and blacktop on the roads. And a lot of these studies, I mean, this board knows the condition of the roads, the public works knows the condition of the roads. Um, go pay a lot of money for studies saying, yeah, this road's bad or that road's bad, drive it. It's pretty obvious.
Call an excavator on one, then you really know.
Yeah.
Or a wood chipper.
Ride your bike. I think what you're saying, uh, was accurately reflect, reflected in the responses by Mr. Eylee. I think he, he's, he made that point. So I think we're agreeing with his responses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, we've made some shifts too, to kind of how we do business. I think that's been a good thing. I mean, we're trying to think a little more, be out, you know, out of the box and, and I appreciate, uh, our CEO's response to that and, and the public works frankly as well. And I do appreciate the grand jury's work. I mean, I think it just, uh, just focuses it more towards us that we really do need to get on this. I think it just kind of highlights, I think Logan and I both ran on a very similar campaign in that regard. I mean, driving around the county, it's not hard to figure out where the, the bumps were at. I mean, I think I, I think I found every one of them at one point, but, uh, yeah.
I found them all except in I own.
Yeah, where, you didn't drive around much, did you?
I don't know where it is. I think it's west somewhere.
I'll send you out to Carbondale. You'll have a new perspective on things.
I had a few, a few, there's a few, a couple typos in there and just small structural changes that, okay, the board did improve that a little bit.
Sure.
Okay. Um, so do we need a motion or is this a direction?
I'd say approval.
Approval? Okay, so that'd be a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Oh, wait, and I need, hold on just for a second. I got to go to the public? And Zoom? And Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, now back to you.
I'd make that motion with a few minor edits.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Anetto?
Second.
Okay, second by Supervisor Cornell, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're on to five G. Code enforcement discussion of possible action relative to permission to abate the following property. Two zero five nine two Duncy Road Pine Grove.
Good morning, Board. Hey, Michelle Gallagher, Code Enforcement. On August 13, 2024, Anador County Board of Supervisors adopted the findings and recommendation of the Administrative Abatement Hearing Board and issued a nuisance abatement order to the property owner. The order requires the removal of all junk and solid waste from the property by September 20, 2024. On August 13, 2024, Code Enforcement mailed a letter containing the signed Hearing BOS Order to the property owner, and the packet was posted on the property. Two inspections were done by Code Enforcement on September 2024 and October 29, 2024. Both inspections showed sign of progress, but Mr. Costelli said that if he had dumpsters, it would get done faster. So on December 17, 2024, I did go before the Board of Supervisors requesting Mr. Costelli be giving, given two dumpsters paid in advance by the county, and Mr. Costelli would pay a monthly fee of $100 until the $1,100 was paid. That contract was signed on May 5, 2025. The Board agreed, and Mr. Costelli signed the contract, and dumpsters were delivered to the property on May 6 through the 21st. The property is located at 2592 Duncy Road Pine Grove. The junk and solid waste on this parcel includes, but it's not limited to, cardboard boxes, household trash, tires, chemicals, vehicle parts, scrap wood, metal, plastic appliances, and a dilapidated trailer. I worked with Mr. Costelli and his son from May to June. Progress was made until all work halted on June 6, 2025. No one showed up for the scheduled inspection, and the first payment was not made. Code Enforcement had left several voice messages requesting that the office be contacted immediately, warning that an abatement would pursue if there was no response. To date, there has been no reply. As a result, inspection warrant was necessary for a pre-bid walkthrough by contractors to obtain bids for the abatement. The inspection warrant was issued by the Amador Superior Court on September 18, 2025. Code Enforcement reached out to multiple businesses, shared the pre-bid walkthrough, the information with two bidders, Got Metal and Espinoza Dollar Hauling Company. The estimated cost of the cleanup is less than $25,000, and since it involves informal bids, it's not classified as a public work project, therefore it does not require DNR registration or adherence to prevailing wages laws. On September 24, 25, Code Enforcement conducted a pre-bid walkthrough of the property with the two bids, two bidders. The Anador County Sheriff Office provided civil standby during the inspection, which was executed without incident. Each vendor submitted a bid for the entire property, including the dilapidated trailer. The bids will cover the removal of all junk and the dilapidated trailer. However, items such as the wood log, wood logs, A-log splitter, outdoor items, two sheds, and their contents will be left untouched. Photos were taken during the inspection. Abatement warrant would be obtained from the Amador Superior Court before proceeding with the cleanup if the owner refuses to sign their certificate of ownership and consent. The county does seek to recoup all costs associated with the nuisance abatement at the owner's expense per California Government Code 25845, and on September 29, GSA approved Code Enforcement to proceed with the project using the attached bid from Got Metal for the entire job. So the bid is for two days to remove all the junk, trash, vehicle parts, and dilapidated trailer is $3,800. To remove the junk and trash and to remove the fifth rule is $950 for a total cost of $4,750. And also just for extra info, currently, the case as it stands, just with Code Enforcement itself, not with the board or the hearings, the case cost has been $6,138.28 so far. He is a repeat offender, we've been out there three times. Any questions?
Any questions for the board? So this is not in your budget to handle this, correct?
No, you guys don't give me an abatement budget.
So it's back to the board for thoughts?
Like it needs to be done.
Yeah, come out of contingencies. We would make that transfer.
That would be in turn put against the, a lien would be put against the property?
Correct, he'll have an opportunity to pay within 30 days, and if not, yes, I'll come back before the board to place a lien on the property.
And it does not go against the taxes, it goes against?
It does go on the taxes.
So it goes on the taxes?
Yes.
Okay.
And he continues to live there?
What's that?
And he would continue to live there?
Yeah, there's, we're not doing anything about the structure itself on this, this is just the junk and trash, yes.
So we just need to budget in, we do this every year at this guy's house?
His son is trying to work with him, I mean, obviously, yes, there's a hoarding issue, but I think that with this all gone, it would be a huge help in him trying to help his dad, so. But yeah, it's not a 100% thing, that's gonna be perfect.
So what you're looking for is $4,750 to be pulled out of contingency?
Yeah, $4,750, yeah.
Notice you have the same two people bid each time, and the one gets it every time, is it close or?
Oh, were the two bids close?
You don't have to divulge anything, but I noticed on all, what, four or five of these that we have before us today, it was the same two companies that bid, and the same one got all four or five of them.
No, they were not close for that one.
And is it, it got junk's or Got Metal's local?
Yes, he's a local business in Sutter Creek. The other one is a business in Calaveras.
Okay, anybody from the public want to talk on this? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Back to the board for motion?
I'd make a motion to go ahead with admitting the property.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Epperson. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that's four, one.
Are you an aye or a nay, Pat?
Oh, reluctant aye, sorry, so that's a five, zero.
I thought it heard aye.
I heard aye for what?
I thought it was an aye or a nay.
I thought it was an aye to a nay. Okay, we're on to five H. Discussion of possible action relative to permission to abate the following property of junk and trash, 1477 Immigrant Trail River Pines.
Okay, I guess this property is located at 1477 Immigrant Trail River Pines. The junk and solid waste on this parcel includes, but it's not limited to, cardboard boxes, household trash, tires, chemicals, vehicle parts, scrap wood, metal plastics, and a dilapidated RV. On June 10, 2025, Amador County Board of Supervisors adopted the findings and recommendation of the Administrative Abatement Hearing Board, issued a nuisance abatement order to the property owner. The order required the removal of the junk and solid waste from the property by July 18, 2025. On June 12, 2025, Code Enforcement mailed a letter containing the signed Hearing BOS Order to the public owner, and the packet was posted on the property. To date, the owner has not complied with this order. The property owner did not reach out to Amador County Code Enforcement within the designated timeframe. A drive-by inspection connected, conducted on July 23, 25, confirmed that the violations were still present. As a result, an inspection warrant was required for the pre-bid walkthrough by contractors to gather bids for the abatement process. Amador Superior Court issued the inspection warrant on September 18, 2025. On September 2024, 2025, Code Enforcement conducted a pre-bid walkthrough of the property with two bidders representing Got Metal and Espinoza Dollar Hauling Company. The Amador County Sheriff Office provided civil standby during the inspection, which was executed without incident. Each vendor submitted a bid for the entire property, including the adjacent vacant lot. The bids will cover the removal of all junk and the dilapidated RV. However, items such as wood log and the log splitter, a pop-up camper, the two sheds and their contents will be left untouched. Photos were taken during the inspection. The scope of the work will also include using bolt cutters to cut the padlock on the gate if necessary, or using a reciprocating saw to remove a portion of the fence to gain access to the junk, solid waste, and dilapidated RV with equipment. An abatement warrant will be obtained from the Amador Superior Court before proceeding with the cleanup if the owner refuses to sign the certificate of ownership and consent. The county will seek to recoup all its costs, and on September 29, GSA approved Code Enforcement to proceed with the project using the attached bid from Got Metal for the entire project.
So I, I just caught that this time. So GSA runs with all your bids, so you're, you have a second eyes on your bids?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So this would be a two-day job. They will remove all the junk, trash, vehicle parts, and dilapidated RV. The removal of the junk and trash was $3,200, and the removal of the fifth wheel was $900 with a total cost of $4,100. Again, additional info, this case up to date has cost $3,641.61. He is a repeat offender, five times so far have gone out there for his stuff, and I know Anetto will know this, he's been brought up at every single River Pines meeting in regards to having issues at his property, and it's a vacant lot with just a lot of stuff being stored on it, and every time brings things out and spreads out throughout the neighborhood, so. This time he did not clean it up, so here we are.
Cleaned it up in the past, though?
He has cleaned it up in the past, yes.
Do you know what should cause the change?
He just has a lot more stuff. I see a lot more stuff there, he just collects it. I said, he's now expanding to using the vacant lot behind his property and putting stuff out on there. What was that?
Do we have any non-repetitive offenders in this group of folks?
No, they're all repeat offenders, yeah.
And again, this will be going on the tax, tax roll?
Yes, correct, all, all of these will go.
So that'll be about $7,700 will be going on there?
Well, they'll be additional, because there'll be time, I've done it up to this point at this hearing is what the cost.
And minimally, I'll change it.
Yes, yeah, there will be some additionals.
Okay. Can, can we get an explanation on how that works?
So the costs of the abatement, including the staff time and, and the actual cleanup, they get a bill. Once the cleanup's done, they send a bill, they, they're warned that if, if they don't pay by the deadline, that it could be added to the taxes. There's another hearing for the board, the board votes to add it to the tax roll because they didn't pay. Then it's added to the tax roll if they don't pay it or enter into a payment program with the tax collector's office or something. They'll go into default, and after five years of being in default, the property is subject to tax collector sale.
So the repeat offending would stop after about seven years of government processes?
Yeah, unless they, unless something happens before that.
Okay, anybody from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay, do I have a motion to?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
If we do all of these, and we just did some a couple months ago, that's, is that all of our contingencies, I mean, where are we at?
Well, the contingencies, well over a million.
Don't say that out loud.
Yeah, well, that's what we, we set in the budget. Yeah, the, so, yeah, we've, we've got capacity for this, but this is it for the, the whole year for all departments.
It's the contingencies for every department for the whole year?
Yes.
Is this an inordinate amount of, for one year?
Are, are people complaining more now, do you see, or, you know, how these people are identified?
No, I mean, it's, it's, like I said, they're repeat offenders, so it's a constant thing. It's either, you know, either we do get them to do something, or it, you know, the case doesn't move forward.
Right.
And it just gets repeated again.
Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and do the cleanup.
Okay. Supervisor Anetto makes a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second this one.
Okay, Supervisor Cornell, seconds, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, five, zero. Okay, we're on to five I. Which is discussion of possible action relative to permission to abate the following property of junk and trash of 16400 Pioneer Creek Road.
So yes, this property is located at 16400 Pioneer Creek Road in Pioneer. The junk and solid waste on this parcel includes, but it's not limited to, cardboard boxes, household trash, tires, chemicals, parts, scrap wood, metal, plastic, illegal electrical, illegal wood additions, and illegal pole barn, and two illegal occupied trailers, in addition to two unsecured appliances are in violation of California Penal Code 42B. On November 21, 2023, Amador County Board of Supervisors adopted the findings and recommendations of the Administrative Abatement Hearing Board and issued a nuisance abatement order to the property owner. The owner was asked to obtain an electrical permit for a permitted garage, permits to obtain legal septic water and power to the residential structure, and to submit building plans and get approval to change the structure to a residential dwelling or demo by January 22, 2024. On November 21, 2023, Code Enforcement mailed a letter containing the signed Hearing BOS Order to the property owner, emailed a packet to the property owner and posted on the property. On February 16, 2024, final order for abatement of violations and certificate of ownership and consent for inspection, along with the BS order, was emailed and mailed to the property owner. The deadline to submit the consent form was February 28, 2024, as a final attempt. On September 25, 2024, Code Enforcement mailed a violation notice and certificate of ownership consent, first-class mail and certified mail to the property owners. The final deadline to send back the consent form was October 10, 2024. No consent form was received. The certified notice was returned on 10/29/24 for refusal. On September 26, 2024, violation notice and certificate of ownership consent for inspection were posted on the property. Code Enforcement also posted on the trailers a do not enter unsafe to occupancy sign, red-tagged. This notice stated that the building had been found to violate the Health and Safety Code Section 1792.0.3 and the California Building Code 116 and 111. The occupancy of the structure must stop immediately, this is a 30-day notice to vacate before abatement action proceeds. Code Enforcement was greeted by the tenants, and the notice was ripped from the building to date. The owners and the tenants have not complied with this order. The property owner failed to make contact with Amador County Code Enforcement within a specific timeframe, consequently, as an inspection warrant became necessary for a pre-bid walkthrough by contractors, this was essential for gathering bids related to the abatement process, which include securing or demolition of the structures, and assessing potential electrical, electrical issues, sewage contamination, and junk cleanup. The inspection warrant was issued by the Amador Superior Court on September 17, 2025. On September 20- On September 24, 25, code enforcement conducted pre-bid walkthrough on the property with the two bidders representing Gott Metal and Espinosa and Daughter Holling Company. The Amador County Sheriff's Office provided civil standby during this inspection, along with the Amador County Animal Control Officers and PG&E, which was executed without incident. Each vendor submitted a bid for the entire property. The bids will cover the removal of all junk and the illegal lower trailer with wood additions, and the option to either secure the upper trailer from illegal occupancy or demo the trailer in pole barn. Electrical was verified by tenants to be done by their cousin. There's no permits on file. In addition, there was an illegally modified storage container currently being used as a sleeping quarter, illegal electrical wiring around the pole barn frame, electrical cords going into the windows of the trailer, and a discharge hose coming outside the garage door onto the ground. The case was explained to the tenants again, informed that they cannot live in a trailer in Amador County. Photos were taken during the inspection. The scope of the work would also include using a bolt cutter to cut the padlock on the gate if necessary. An abatement warrant would be obtained by the Amador Superior Court before proceeding with the cleanup, but the owners refused to sign the certificate of ownership and consent. And the county will seek to recoup all costs associated with the abatement. On September 29, GSA approved code enforcement proceed with the project using the attached bid from Gott Metal for the entire job. So there are two options. Depending on the one that you choose, it's a two-to-four day. Option one is to remove the junk, trash, and demo the illegal modified trailer and the double-wide trailer with pole barn at the cost of $14,550. Option two would be to remove the junk, trash, demo the illegal modified trailer, and secure the double-wide trailer with the pole barn from illegal occupancy, board up the windows and doors, which require around 13 sheets of wood, at the cost of $6,600. And then for info, currently, the case is at $6,386.42. It is a repeat offender, been out there four times. So again, there is no septic, there is no legal water, there is no legal property. So I do know the lower trailer is being dumped into the ground into 55-gallon drums. I'm not aware of how the upper trailer is getting rid of their sewer. And then the lower trailer also, their gray water is going out the side of the hill, which does go down into the creek.
And, yeah, the owners contacted me. They said they'd done some work, I'm not sure how much. The container, I know, is currently not occupied, according to them. I've not been up there.
When I went there, it was.
How long ago was that?
Their brother-in-law, on September 24.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they contacted me quite a bit more recently than that. I mean, I know. They claim they're making progress.
They have not come in to do anything, and the owner already told the building department he's not getting any building permits.
And I don't doubt that's true.
Yeah.
What would permits cost for a pole barn?
That I don't know. Building Department's not here. But still, the trailer, they can't live in the trailer.
They're here, actually.
Okay.
Sorry. I was just asking a question. How much would permits cost on a pole barn? How many poles is it, and how big is it, I guess? Just covering a trailer, or?
This is covering a trailer that you can't live in, yeah.
Are you talking $1,200, $1,400?
Yeah, I need you to come forward and speak into the mic.
Yeah, maybe. I'm sorry to put you on the spot there, but yeah.
So if we were to do, you know, the double-wide, and building permits to allow a double-wide, you know, the septic, it's the, you know, your building permit and all your inspections?
For the pole barn, I was asked in particular, but yeah, anything else? I mean, I don't know what that would cost.
Yeah, how much would that cost?
Yeah, Todd, with the building department? I'm thinking $1,200, $1,400 for a pole barn-type permit for something like that.
Okay.
And then, of course, you would have, if there was anything that was inhabitable, there would be some other fees, but that wouldn't be considered habitable.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So we have option one or option two?
Do they know, where would they live otherwise besides there? I know both of them fairly well.
Mr. Peterson has a house there right on Ione, and the tenant actually said that she stayed there several times. So Mr. Peterson actually has two properties that he could move his mother-in-law and daughter. I think it's the daughter.
It's the daughter, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the brother, is he living there, too, as in?
No, he was just visiting. He visits. I forgot where he said he.
Yeah, I know where he's at.
From, yeah. But, yeah.
Anybody from the public want to talk on this? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, back to the board. Any more questions?
I guess, yeah, a lot of the electrical, was it just electrical, like, extension cords?
So yes, going in the trailer, but PG&E did confirm that the electrical that's coming out of the PG box, and there's some pictures of it, and other, those are not legal that they put in, and he doesn't know where those are going because they're going into the ground. So he's not sure if it's going into the trailer or what it is, because they wouldn't let us look at the electrical box to verify that. But he did say that the wiring that's there is not the correct wiring that it should be.
I will say, the one thing I have a little heartburn over, it sounds like there's a lot of issues. I just hate losing housing, even.
But it's not a house, it's a trailer. And you don't allow living in a trailer in Amador County. You guys decided not to switch that.
I thought it was a double-wide.
No, it's a trailer. Yeah, it's still a trailer.
Yeah, I know there's definitely trailers out at the, well, several places. There's trailers in Ione, certainly. There's also trailers up at Lake Amador as well.
Did they reach out to you with a repentant heart? Like, are they willing to move out of there, or?
They're, I would just say, they're very simple people in that regard as for where they're living at. They're, I mean, the one owner's very libertarian on things. She just doesn't see the necessity of it. They're good people. It's just, and her mom's lived there for a while. This is not like something that just popped up. How long's she been here, do you know? It's been her, it's been here a while, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
It's not been like six months or two years, it's been probably a number of years.
It's been since 1970, because that's when they were notified, or the owner at the time was notified that you can't live in a trailer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if you know them?
Yep.
Is there a possibility you could reach out to them and we could find?
Yeah.
Some common ground?
Yeah, I mean, I could work on definitely getting some of that stuff permitted, I would think. I just, I know the attitude. I mean, I've worked with them for years. They're horrible people, they're just want to do it their own way.
Can you use hyperbole to motivate them?
Well, we could always try.
You said they've been there since 1970?
Not them, the trailer has.
Trailer has been, yeah. Occupied for a very.
Yeah, we're talking a mobile home or a travel trailer?
It's a trailer. I wouldn't necessarily, you can travel that on the road, you know, you, because it's wide.
I mean, I just had a, if you want to say that, I just had a travel trailer.
Yeah.
Lot onto my property.
But yes, the intent was the original owner did get a building permit to build a home and got a use permit to live in a trailer, and he never built the home. So that's what happened.
And I do know the place on Martin Lane is for sale currently. I talked to him on Sunday, and I'm pretty sure they're wanting to build a house somewhere that may resolve this in a year or so if they sell the property. Just, it's been going off since 1970. I mean, I don't know. I understand your situation, but yeah.
Well, do you want to push this to the next meeting so you can have a conversation?
I would like to, yeah.
Okay.
Pleasure, Ward.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
Love that idea.
Continue 5-I until our next meeting. Onto 5-J. Discussion of possible action relative to permission to abate the following property of junk, trash, and illegal structure of 14645 Fiddletown Road, Fiddletown.
Okay, yes, this property is located at 146545 Fiddletown Road, Fiddletown. Mr. Espin's case has been ongoing since 2008 due to the same violation. He has been a repeat offender and has failed to comply with the county's requirements since 2008. The county continues to receive complaints regarding this matter. So on July 12, 2022, Amador County Board of Supervisors adopted a finding recommendation of the Administrative Abatement Hearing Board and issued a nuisance abatement order to the property owner. The owner was required to obtain permits for the septic system, water from the Fiddletown Water District, power, and for an illegal two-story structure, or to demolish the structure by September 12, 2022. On the same day, code enforcement mailed a letter containing the signed hearing BOS order to the property owner via first-class mail and certified mail, and also emailed the packet to the owner. The county worked with Mr. Espin over the following months, but he failed to comply. As a result, the case was referred to county counsel. On September 25, 2024, final notice along with a certificate of ownership and consent for inspection and abatement notice was mailed to the property owner via first-class and certified mail. This notice gave the owner one final chance to comply with the Board of Supervisors' order by either obtaining a demolition permit for the illegal structure or constructing illegally occupied residential structure. Additionally, the owner was required to obtain a grading permit and establish illegal septic system, water supply, and power connection. The deadline for returning the consent for inspection and abatement notice for code was October 10, 2024. Failure to comply resulted in abatement action. Code enforcement also posted a do not enter unsafe to occupy sign on the structure red-tagged. This notice indicated the building was found in violation of Health and Safety Code 17920.3 and the California Building Code 116 and 111, requiring immediate cessation of occupancy. This notice served as a 30-day notice to vacate before abatement action would proceed. As of now, the owner has not complied with this order. The property owner failed to make contact with the Amador County Code Enforcement within a specific timeframe. Consequently, inspection warrant became necessary for a pre-bid walkthrough by contractors. This was essentially bid for gathering bids related to the abatement process, which include securing or demolishing the structure, assessing potential electrical issues, and sewage contamination. The inspection warrant was issued by the Amador Superior Court on September 17, 2025. On September 24, 2025, code enforcement conducted pre-bid walkthrough of the property with the two bidders representing Gott Metal and Espinosa Daughter and Holling Co. The Amador County Sheriff's Office provided civil standby during the inspection, along with PG&E, and everything was executed without incident. Each vendor submitted a bid for the property, covering either the demolition of this structure or securing the building from illegal occupancy. Additionally, an outdoor shower had been installed with the water draining directly onto the ground. Mr. Espin is collecting water from the creek and pumping it into two large storage tanks on his property. There was a strong odor of propane gas detected during the inspection, and the front porch awning is poorly supported and presenting a safety hazard. Photos were taken throughout the inspection. Before the inspection, I served Mr. Espin with a 24-hour notice, inquired why he was still occupying the structure. He responded that he believed it was permissible based on information from his district supervisor, and it doesn't seem like the county will do anything to me. You will have to pull me out, is what he stated. So when I asked how he sourced water and electricity as well, he managed his wastewater. He explained that he currently brings in water, since the creek is dry, and has reinstated solar panels on his roof, and disposes of his wastewater directly onto the ground. Regarding his bathroom waste, Mr. Espin mentioned that he uses a compost toilet and also goes on his property. He added that he has no intention of converting the structure into a residential home and plans to sell it as is, allowing the new owner to make any conversions. If approved, an abatement warrant will be obtained for the Amador Superior Court before proceeding with the abatement action if the owner refuses to sign the certificate of ownership and consent. The county will seek to recoup all costs associated with the abatement, and on September 29, 2025, GSA approved the code enforcement to proceed with the project for the attached bid. So depending on the option that you choose, it would take one to four days, depending, again, on the option you choose. So option one, to demo the illegal structure, would be $7,600. And option two, to secure the illegal structure from illegal occupancy, board up the windows and doors, 23 sheets of wood, at the cost of $1,500. Currently, the case so far is at $5,341.44. Again, he's a repeat offender, and he's been notified of this thing since 2008, eight times.
Hey, anybody from the public? Well, I need you on the microphone, but you could bring that chair up to the microphone off to the right here?
Did any of you read what I wrote? I think Brian. Yeah, it isn't presented well at all by Michelle, my case. There's so many things left out. And I brought up a lot of that in what I wrote. Briefly, mind you. But when it was before the board last time in 2022, I wrote a similar thing, kind of stating, it's been going on a long time. That's correct. But, yeah, I was always told it's complaint-driven. So a lot of people live in their places, illegal or not, and building department doesn't like enforcing it. And when it gets to code enforcement, I guess that's a different matter. So I can't quite remember when the first code enforcement thing was. But I did everything to comply at this last hearing, and the last thing was, I never wanted to make it converted to a resident. It's just too much money. I never had the money before. As of 2022, I inherited, my mother died, and I inherited enough money to do a substantial amount of work. And I elected to reinstate the permit for the garage, and, you know, I got the permit, a grading permit. There's a demolition permit they wanted me to do for a funky shed I put up for building materials while, you know, I was collecting to, for the building, ultimately to work on it. But the one sticking thing that I just couldn't swallow, and I said it in what I wrote to you guys, was that I had to have a paved encroachment put in. And I made it very clear in writing, I wasn't going for residence, and that's what's required when you have residence. You need a paved encroachment from the county road. And it was going to be torn out when the bridge gets done. My property abuts the bridge, and that project's been on hold for years. I don't quite understand why it's on hold for so long. What is the reason?
I think I might have an idea. Not that it pertains this, but maybe a little bit. I think what it is, is there's like federal funding goes towards a bridge program, and everybody kind of puts their hands in the pot. And some of these people, there's allocated funds, they put their hand, their project becomes more money than it was supposed to be, and so that person, that entity gets more money than they probably should have, but they drain that fund, and so telefunds build back up. People that were in line, like the number two, three, four people in line, they have to wait till number one gets funded.
Well, I was told.
But that's kind of, that's kind of material in a way.
I wondered, well.
Isn't it isn't?
Okay, yeah. Back to the paved encroachment. Why would I be required to have a paved encroachment?
I sympathize with your thoughts there, because I think at some point, probably not in the fairly near future, that bridge will be built, and when they do, they're going to probably put in paved encroachments, or rip out whatever you have and put in a paved one. So I could see where you're coming from in that.
I said, you know, I stated in the letter last time, I was going to move out.
Go ahead and speak into the microphone a little bit more, because.
My intent was not to continue living there. I just wanted to make it legal, bring it up to date, and.
Are you still living there, or have you been?
I am. Yeah, I just threw up my hands when that was a requirement before I'd get approved plans back, to begin working so that I can work on it legitimately, safely. And I just said, well, I'm not going along with this. And, you know, I stated, I'm going to protest non-violently, you have to carry me out, and then I'm going to take some legal action and get as much publicity as I can. But that, you know, the threat isn't so much the point, is why was, why was I required to have a paved encroachment? That's just going to get ripped out. When I already, then I found I had an encroachment, an ag encroachment, I'd forgotten I'd got, because initially, I got permits for the garage, two-story garage, and I was required to have a paved encro, I mean, a gravel. And I was required to have a paved encro, I mean, a gravel ag encroachment. I had it. They confirmed it at Public Works.
I don't, I don't know if we can legally do it personally. I don't have a problem with a gravelled encroachment there. I think when that bridge goes in, it's all going to change. But I think there's a lot, a lot more issues than just the gravelled encroachment or paved encroachment, however you want to couch it.
Well, a paved encroachment, that's got to be at least $12,000. And I'm saying I'm going to move out. So why, why is it, uh...
Well, if you move out, I don't think it's a problem.
Yeah, so why wasn't I contacted? I stated it clearly to Patrick, I guess it was you, right? You know, I said I had a hard time swallowing that, that I'm going to have to put in this paved encroachment. And then I came back and I talked to the county council, and, you know, I said, I just, I wasn't, I didn't, this isn't right, and I'm going to protest nonviolently. And, and if there's some, I don't want to sue, that takes a lot of money. I probably won't win anyway, but it just isn't right. I mean, am I guilty from the get-go from hitting hard financial times during the last recession? And I didn't have the money to live anywhere else. I could live there, and I was allowed to live there. I, you know, it took years to even get one complaint.
But as you said, that this is a complaint-driven county. So somebody had to complain. It's not, Michelle does not go out and look for this. And so one of your neighbors didn't, you know, didn't care for it and filed a complaint. And so that's how this all started. You know, we're not looking for this. You can see how miserable we are up here having to deal with this. You know, it's not as if there's something we really want to do. But it's also, you know, it's your neighbors, or how, you know, your waste comes out of your home, how...
I wa, I water a large tree. It never even runs off. It goes right down, and that tree is thriving. That's my kitchen wastewater. It never runs off.
And where do you put your compost?
I dig a hole, a shallow hole, and I bury it. And I, in, there's air mixed in, so by the time I do that, it's already composted quite a bit.
And that is not a, you know, thing that, you know, that's great up in the forest, you know, when you have one person going in one direction.
I have a huge amount of, of space all around me. There's an acre there. It doesn't, it isn't, I understand the legality. I've been a building contractor. I've built over 20 houses.
And so you build composting places at other homes?
No, because it's not legal.
Thank you.
I think there needs to be some new provisions for the state of the cost of housing and what you, and the homelessness thing. I have money now, but I don't have enough money to just dump everything into it to make this legal, let alone I'm getting roadblocks from the Fiddletown Community Service District that there's, there's some real issues there. They're claiming I didn't pay $15,000 for a hookup, right? They say, yes, I paid the first one, because I have two lots there I'm on. I paid 12,000 for the first one. I paid 15 for the last, the second one. And I have their paperwork. I don't have the bill of sale. He said, you know, we'll hold the check until a bill of sale is drawn up and both parties sign it. And I never got a bill of sale. And I didn't even think about it until this whole thing started three years ago. And then Bill Easton, the president of the Fiddletown Community Service District, had a bunch of exhibits, you know, against me. You know, I have been a little messy. You know, I think that's a real big factor. But you can't be seeing that much storing stuff. You know, I store right next to the one neighbor. That's my right to store two boats and a truck that, that I hope to use and...
What are your future intentions? Are you planning on staying there or are you moving?
No, I don't feel welcome in this county. I, I mean, I'm, I'm a bit of a hermit. And with all this, I get it, you know? But I don't want to have my assets diminished like this. That's what isn't right.
So you're planning on moving soon, or?
Well, if it gets boarded up, yes. And I do have, I do have another property up in the mountains that I would like to build on. But, you know, the building departments and government, you get a reputation, and I'm going to have trouble up there, no doubt, too.
Is it in Amador County or another county?
It's another county. Yeah, I went and talked to the building official up there, and he goes, you know, asking some, if there, state of things, if there are big changes. And he goes, oh, did you run out of room? Because I have a lot of building materials. I bought coal units from Meeks, numbers of them. I have a forklift. I've always planned on doing a bigger garage or shop and using some of that cold wood for ceiling wood, have it resawn. The first house I built in Sonoma County, I did that. Number two dug fur, had it resawn in half, dried, TNG, and I put it up in the ceiling. It was nice and cheap. Anyway, a lot of that, I'm thinking for that. The materials I have, and I used to have a sawmill, so I've got a lot of lumber. It's like living in a corporation yard. Some people are gassed at that, you know?
I understand.
But it's private. It isn't in everyone's view.
It's a hard thing. I mean, I'm personally putting ADU on my property. I'm in Mace Meadows and, and putting in the things that I've had to pay for, you know, everything that I've had to do is incredibly expensive. And it's not something I can truly afford either. So it's, it's a thing that, you know, that we're trying to do. So it's, but I have to still do it, you know? PG&E is my, my worst enemy right now.
I'm ready to do it, too.
So...
So are your intentions to make an effort to comply? And would you be willing to do something like get a porta potty on the property while you're complying? Something along those lines?
You know, I have a tank installed. You guys have given a permit to the Fiddletown Schoolhouse, old schoolhouse. They're not hooked to the sewer, but they have a bathroom, and they go into this tank. It's not used much. And mine, it's a 1,500-gallon tank. That could, I could go for a long time without having it pumped. But I figured that's, you don't like doing things out of the norm. And I kind of figured you'd just throw that out. So I figured, yes, I'll move out, but I want to be able to work on it. I want to have a permit as a garage, because I've still got to deal with Fiddletown Community Service District. And if I tried to go for a residence, I don't know how that would work. And, and to tear into the street would be very expensive, too, to do the live connections for water and sewer. And he's saying I didn't pay him $15,000.
Now, that's, that's not something that we can...
No. Anyway...
So your intent is to make an effort to comply. The concern would be what's happening with your sewage while complying. So are you willing to do something?
No, I moved right out. Give me the permit. Just give me the permit with the approved plans or if you have corrections. I never got anything back.
Well, you have to apply for permits.
I did. I did right after the last board thing. The last board meeting in 2022. And they give me a permit, they reactivate it for the garage. But there was an addition that I paid the plan check fees, but the, I never, and I, I threw up my hands. I just got so frustrated when I hit that encroachment deal. I just kind of said, I'm done, you know? Come in and haul me out, and maybe I'll, I'll take some action after I'm out of there. I'm not going to fight and be violent, but I'm going to protest and get as much publicity as I can. So those, that final permit fees is still due, but it's probably, it's all expired at this point.
Right.
But that wasn't right, that encroachment permit. I mean, that was an error on whose part? I don't know. Is it your, the Borg's input that made that happen? Or is it the building department? Or was it Mr. Eily? I, I don't know. Where's the responsibility?
Everybody's required to have an encroachment permit. Everybody is required to have an encroachment permit.
For an ag building when I...
Yes. And you're living in your ag building right now.
You can have a gravel encroachment.
You are living in your...
I was going to move out. Did you?
But you're still living there. As we're contacting you, as we're doing all this, you're still living in that facility.
And it's, that's my protest. Yeah.
Okay.
We're asking you to do what everyone else is being asked to do, which is to come up with an encroachment permit. Now, we can...
No, that is incorrect, because it's for a building. I stated three years ago, I'm not going for residence, where you need to have sewer, water, and a paved encroachment. That is not what I'm going for.
But that's what you've got.
No.
You're living in it.
I'm going to move out. I said I was going to move out.
But you haven't. You said we got the, we got the haul you out.
I did everything. You read what I wrote. I, I, I had the, an outhouse set up over the tank. They wanted that out. I did, I had a toilet set up in, in the shop. I pulled that out. And all the waste line that in, in the building, rainwater collection system, I dismantled that. The small solar system I had on the roof, I, I pulled that off. And then, then when nothing was going to happen with this encroachment deal, I put things back. Not the toilet, not the outhouse. I started composting, you know, and doing that. And I just left, and I was prepared if we'll deal with it again with this encroachment idea. It just isn't right. I, I was going to move out. I'm a man of my word.
So, so then, I'm sort of unclear, though. Did you get the old garage re-instated or no? I thought you said two different things.
I did. It did get reinstated, so, but it's, it's, you know, I think it's 18 months. You've got to do it. So it's, it's expired.
Okay, so it's not reinstated? Okay.
It was.
It was, I know, but it's not now.
No, not right now.
So I just want to make sure that we get your letter factually correct. And then you said you applied for permit for second-story garage and paid the plan check fees?
Yeah.
And where is that at now? Is that, are those still active or they need to be repaid, repaid again?
I came in, it was the day before yesterday to see about that. And, and I was told, yeah, it was something like $700 for...
Okay, that sounds right, yeah.
Well, it doesn't sound right, actually. She said, I wanted to ask her more about it, and so I came in yesterday. And, because it was just adding 300, about 350 square feet. And Polly in building department said it was for 700 square feet. So that would have been the whole upstairs. And it, the, the original permit was for lower story and half the upper story. So there's something wasn't, I, I, anyway, I need to correct, but they said, well, we got to go here first, then we'll see what...
The fees, the fees have not been paid, then?
No, I was prepared to pay it yesterday.
Okay, because he says you paid them, so that's...
Todd said not to do it and to wait until what happens here today.
Okay, I got it. I just want to make sure your letter's factual, so that's also a no. Okay, thank you.
Another curious question on your bullet point number three. Demolition permit for illegal shed. Did you tear that shed down yet?
No, I didn't. No, I threw my hands up over its, you know, the building department was working with the neighbor, and, and they had to sign off. They, before they'd issue the permit, the Gormalis Trust had to sign off on it. So they did. I didn't notice it, because I, I threw my hands up three years ago. I just, but they did sign off on it. Do you understand?
So how long did they sign off on it?
That was three years ago.
The Gormalis family or the building department?
No, did, you mean, no, they didn't sign off, because I didn't, I didn't do it. I didn't demolish it.
So the Gormalis family had to sign off, and you're demolishing the building?
Because there's a property line dispute. And I think that's what triggered all of this here three, three years ago, was the property line dispute. He's a deputy sheriff, this grandson or the son. He lives on the property.
What I'm asking, so basically, you'd received permission from all parties involved that you could tear the shed down, you never tore it down. That's something that needed to be done. That's a yes or a no. Did you tear it down or not?
I did not.
Okay.
And I didn't do any of the other things.
No, I think we kind of got, I mean, do I sympathize if a person...
It's a property line dispute.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not working with this very well at all, Scott.
By me taking that shed down, then they should take their fence down that's on my property, too. So that whole issue, by me taking that action...
The county asked you to take that shed down.
Or was it the sheriff's department?
No.
Did...
The sheriff's department does not have that authority to tell you to take down a structure.
No.
Only Michelle and our building department.
Did Samantha come? She works now at the building department. Did she come from the sheriff's office? It...
I do not know.
Mr. Espin, my, one of my heroes is Monty Wolf. He went out into the McCollum Wilderness, and he lived out there for 12 years. So I struggle with all of these things, but the distinction was he went off and he didn't, he lived in such a way that he wasn't a detriment to all the people around him. He wasn't in feuds with all the people around him. He wasn't on other people's property lines. He wasn't burying. I mean, if I hear you, I want to go live off the land, too. I think most men dream of wandering off into the wilderness. It just, we're not in the wilderness. You're on a one-acre lot in the middle of town, and you're burying your sewage inside of your neighbors. I think we've crossed a line here.
I'm burying my sewage inside of my neighbors?
In sight of?
I'm not. I was married to a fam, a woman, her family had a pack station. There was no, right on the San Joaquin River, high up in the Sierras. We dealt with all our, and had, it used to be a Boy Scout camp. You couldn't dispose of it. The, we would wheelbarrow it up on the hillside and bury it, and that was allowed.
It wasn't in downtown Fiddletown. It was out in the mountains.
I have an acre. It's not visible. I'm one person, and it could be going into the tank and not even doing that, but they didn't, the powers that be didn't want me to do it. I'm, I'll move out. Give me the permit. I'll move out after tomorrow.
Give you what permit?
The permit to work on my garage, two-story garage. I always intended on converting it eventually to a residence, but not the way things are going now.
Well, I mean, whatever decision we make here, that does not impact, impact that. If we go forward with this, you can still do that. It's just after you're off the property, that would be the only difference. It's not precluding you from getting your permits for getting your encroachment and all that stuff.
Well, but what, the encroachment doesn't jibe with what I want to do to improve it.
It's a requirement, I mean...
I wanted to be assured I do not have to do a paved encroachment.
That's, I mean, that's a whole nother, I mean, that's, I don't know how that...
That's the code. That's a very clear thing. I think Todd could talk to that. It isn't required to have a paved encroachment for a garage. And I got a permit for it.
You want to build a house, so I mean, I mean, I mean, even if, I mean, if you, if you actually were complying with the things you've even stated in your letters, three out of the eight, you've contradicted yourself on a variety of occasions.
Where specifically?
One, we stated an old garage permit. That's, hasn't been done. You did it, but it's not done now. It's not current. Obtain the demolition permit. You haven't done that. Number eight, you applied...
The what?
The demolition permit.
Number two?
You just, you just verified with him that you didn't do it.
What?
Number eight, applied for permit for additional second-story garage and paid plan check fees. You haven't done that. Those three things out of the eight that you said you did, you didn't do? Number eight, applied for permit for additional second story garage and paid plan check fees. You haven't done that. Those three things out of the eight that you said you did, you didn't do-
No, okay, go to number two. Go, one and two, one and two are combined, cuz they didn't give me plans back for when they reinstated the garage permit. They were holding that until the addition got cleared up.
That's validating my point. Thank you, but I appreciate that, but that's-
So how can I proceed with it when I don't have approved plans? And it was all on this encroachment. In my whole mind, that was the thing, and it wasn't right.
Well, I, I don't think I can help you then.
You, you keep saying paved encroachment.
Yeah.
You don't have to have a paved encroachment onto your property. You have to have an encroachment across county property.
Right.
And there's a difference between a residential permit and a ag permit, because an ag permit is blue moon access, not daily access as a residential. So right now, you're doing a residential access to your property off of county property.
That's right.
So that is what we're asking, the, 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 the building department is asking for. Doesn't physically have to be paved to your house. Is that what you're trying to ask for? I, I, that's where I'm getting a little bit confused, is a paved access.
I, I stated I'm gonna move out.
Okay.
I did everything to comply. I'm gonna move out. I just need the permit to improve and protect my largest investment.
Understand.
Okay, let's do this. Um, so, uh, we need the application for an encroachment permit, similar to what Jeff Campbell recommended. So we get the application in. If the Fiddletown project comes through, we'll construct it, uh, as part of that project, right? Making him build it and then tear it out, which I agree with, doesn't make any sense. But we need to have that application, complete with all the, the other stuff online. So in order to pull your permits, you would not be required to complete that, complete that, uh-
Portion of it.
Portion, but you would need to apply for it. So we would have the documentation there. So that wouldn't stand in the way of getting your building permits.
So that's like, then I can keep on living there then? So I'm, you're, I'm, I'm gonna move out? Or you're gonna board it up without my permission, so why is that an issue?
Cuz you just said you're not moving out unless we give the permit. So he's telling you exactly how to get the permit so that you can move out.
It's gonna be boarded up. Michelle got the, the prices. It's gonna be boarded up. And I'm not gonna go break the law to go back in it. So if that happens-
Not giving us evidence that that statement is true.
Give you evidence how it's in the future. How, how can I?
Break the law.
Okay, I, I, I want you to think about something right now. Because of, of all of this that's going on, all the work that she has put into this is five thousand, three hundred dollars.
That's the first time I was even made aware of that.
I understand that, and that's the reason I'm trying to get it. Now-
That should've been, I should've been made aware of that years ago.
And as you've listened to the other, um, sections, you know, you know, the, the other ones. So option one for the county right now is seventy-six hundred dollars, which would go on your tax lien. You know, and that's, if you can get ahead of this game, which is way behind, but to get your permits, you know, this'll change things. You know, that's, you know, you're, you're trying to change what you, you know, what's already happened in the past. We're asking you to go to the building department and make everything right, instead of continue.
I did it once, and the encroachment wasn't right. I said I was gonna move out. So I had to move out. Then, then it would've, then everything would've been fine if I moved out and I trusted no one was gonna come up with some other thing. I, I, my trust is not real-
I understand.
With the county. I've got, I got engineered, approved engineered, uh, septic system for where I'm living now. And then I was told, this is years back, then I was told, oh, no, you can't do it. And they wouldn't, explain why. It's political reasons.
No, there's no political reasons for septic system.
That's what I was told. It was political reasons.
I mean, the only thing I can say is you're too close to the creek or something to that effect, but that's not political.
No, Jeff Moreland, he designed it. It was up away from the creek, and it was all legitimate. It was a pump system.
Mr. Espin, I think we're going around in circles over here.
Well, I'm just-
You're saying, you, you're saying, because we won't, the county won't do exactly as you want, you're not gonna move out. Well-
You know, there is such a thing as abuse of power.
There's also abuse of your neighbors.
My neighbors?
In the rule of the law, which-
What, by digging, getting rid of my waste, that's abuse of my neighbors? They can see it, they can't see it?
By the rules we operate under, yes. Now, will I say, do I sympathize like Logan said about wanting to go out and live in the forest, away from everything? Yeah.
I've done that. No, I'm, I wanna go by the laws. I went for quite a period because I couldn't afford it. So I had a hard, I had a hard period.
I understand. I, I imagine you probably did. I found some of your garbage down there. It turned out, I found, maybe somebody stole your-
No, you mentioned that before.
Maybe somebody stole your garbage or whatever, but had a, had a box with your name on it. So maybe somebody came and took your garbage. Halfway to Plymouth.
No, that, that's, that's ridiculous.
Well, that's what it said. That's all. I'm just saying what it said in the box, the shipping label.
Oh, like a FedEx delivery thing or something?
I'm not gonna details. It doesn't matter. Just, um, the thing is, we're trying to work with you, Scott, and I don't think you're working that so much at all.
No.
It's gonna be your way of the highway, and we're not, we're not gonna do that.
It isn't right.
Todd, do you wanna say something? Please come forward.
I was gonna, uh, ask Todd to clarify the status of the permits.
Oh, okay.
There are no current permits on the property. They've been expired. The ones that I wear have been expired for about three years. They would actually require a recent middle. When they were issued the first time, we were quite understanding. I'll just put it that way. I believe that the structure that has been built out there does not meet the general requirements of prescriptive construction. There are several issues with it, certain hold downs and structural. Uh, there are also some dilapidation.
It was inspected, the framing was inspected.
Also, there is no legal means for disposal of the sewage on that property. So we have several issues there. It seems to be what we do, um, we just seem to go around in circles with this. You have one answer, then it goes to the next. There's been several conversations in my department, so, at the counter with Mr. Espin.
Could his-
Resembled this right now.
It's a circle jerk.
Yes.
Um, question for Todd. Um, could that structure be brought, you think, you think it could be brought into code, possibly?
Well, actually, I gotta ask-
Can I interject right here to-
No, hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. You, you've been, you've been going around in circles. Wait a minute.
All right, go ahead. I have something very specific to add.
Look, I'm trying to ask him a question, trying to help you, so let him answer.
Okay. Enough money, enough time, he could do it.
Reasonable amount of money?
My major question would be the second story on that building, and it'd be expensive.
Okay.
Well, but you're saying that no septic system can be put on that property?
Well, I didn't say no septic system. I said there is no legal means for disposers of sewer, uh, disposal, let me say that real good, disposal of sewage on that property.
So it's, it's a-
There is none right now.
So that, you can't put an engineered system in there, or?
You could, but there is none right now.
Probably get an engineered septic. You could probably shoehorn one in there somewhere, but there's a lot of issues with that too.
Okay.
Look in the file. It's already been, it was approved. I have a copy. You guys have a copy of engineered septic system.
It's not in.
Not, no, it isn't.
We cannot let, see people live in downtown Fiddletown without a legal means of disposing of their sewage. Like, we have to be concerned about your neighbors at this point.
Can I say one thing? Todd, you mentioned that I don't have hold downs. It wasn't, the, the plans were approved. It was inspected. The framing was written off all the way up to sheathing, and roof sheathing was signed off. So the structure, there's no issue. It passed. The only difference was the second story. It was, uh, a law. They weren't allowed full second stories at that point. Maybe they still aren't. And I did go over that open area. It's two stories all the way up. So I went over that, and I was prepared, maybe I'm gonna have to tear it out. But they worked with me, and we're gonna somehow call it storage and let it go. But I was prepared to pull it out and go by the old approved plans and, and inspected plans. It was inspected and passed.
Well, the, one thing I'll say, Mr. Espin, Todd Barr normally doesn't get too irritated about things. He works with people very well. He's, he's looking a little bit irritated, so, um, you're just going around in circles a little bit. I will put this on, on the table.
Around in circles, I addressed very specifically what he said, and you can verify it. And he, he's making that, you can't make that building legal. It's already been approved and inspected and passed. The whole framing.
For the first floor.
Todd, can you address that?
To the best of my knowledge, that, that structure has not been inspected and approved as it is built.
Okay.
Oh, the, the-
Maybe that's something we could check, something we could check on then, Todd?
Yeah, that's, the second, whole second story is.
And Mr. Espin, I'll tell you this much. Personally, I wouldn't care if you lived somewhere in a teepee today if your neighbors don't care. But if your neighbors can care, then we're gonna, we're gonna follow the law. That's how it is.
Law needs to change. Yeah. I don't think that's right.
Talk to some people at the state, not the county, cuz these, we're running state laws. So that's, you know, that's the unfortunate thing here, is we, we don't get to adapt and overcome what-
No, I appreciate that. I think the state laws need to change too. It's just unaffordable.
Well, um, you've had your word. Uh, we need to continue this and, uh, keep on going. Does anybody else from the public wanna speak on this?
I got a quick statement.
Yes, sir.
I lived up off of Carson Drive for a number of years, and my neighbor had a septic that failed, and it ran right down the road and went between my house, went down right by, right between my house and my neighbor's garage. Like, it's about as wide as this building. And I built a berm so it wouldn't go down into my garage. But in the winter, when he drove in, it would go in the garage, and I talked to the neighbor, cuz I didn't wanna go to the county. I said, hey, man, you're a, you got septic problems. Oh, no, he said, it's a spring. I said, springs don't bubble brown foam and smell like that. He said, well, his pool, his pool had flooded his septic, so I gave him like a, another year. And I said, hey, you know, you gotta do something. I don't wanna turn you in the county. Finally, I ended up turning him in the county after about three, two, three years of living with that, and then he gave me the one, one fingered wave all the time. But sometimes there's rules and regulations for a reason. Um, and I think Mr. Espin doesn't seem to wanna acknowledge that. And so I guess we gotta do what we gotta do.
Nope. Yes. I do wanna, I don't like all the rules, but I'm totally willing to go by the rules on everything there, cuz it's my biggest investment. And I, I, I've built many houses. I appreciate the, the going by the rules.
What you're saying is not what you're doing though, Scott.
Well, no, we'll accept that. If you're saying you're willing to completely go by the rules, rule one is you don't live there starting today. So that's rule one, and then we can move on to the rest of the rules.
All right, I'll move.
Thank you for following the rules.
I started moving out yesterday, and I will, and I was continuing this morning. I'll move out. But I want that, that permit, and I think I should be considered- I, it should be considered the way that encroachment, you know, I don't think that was fair, throwing that paved encroachment.
We can, we can fix-
We're gonna, we're gonna put that kind of in a hole.
That, but we need a permit. Your permit's expired. That's the rule. That says that after so much time, the permit expires, and so you're gonna need to reapply.
So our action items today are, one, move out, cuz you're gonna follow the rules, and two is go apply for your permits. And then those are the two, that's where we start.
And when you reapply, we will, we will fix the part of it that requires the, the driveway permit.
Yep.
Or completed the driveway, so that-
Simple. We're all working together here. Just, those are the first two rules we've gotta do. Gotta move out, and you gotta go apply for those permits, and then we'll work on the encroachment part. Fair, super fair.
All right.
Okay, now we're back to the actual code enforcement part of this.
Do we have, Todd hasn't actually seen the recent photos.
Okay.
So I think you guys have the recent photos of the structure. Um, it has siding on it. That siding is not intended to be exposed to weather. Uh, that would all have to be replaced, so that's the one thing that I didn't recall.
What was that siding?
It's OSB. It's been exposed to the weather now for years, so it would all have to be replaced. Some of the stuff, like I said, um, originally is, it just doesn't meet prescriptive construction that could be approved. It probably would have to be, probably have to get an engineer, actually, to go back into this structure and, and take a look at it. Like I said, I, uh, there's just so many more issues than I actually remembered. I apologize. I, I kinda got a reminder here. So, anyway, that's, uh-
And, and my thing is, this is, this is two thousand and eight. He's been told over and over to do this. He still hasn't done it, and he keeps getting more time, and he still doesn't do things. So this is kinda why we're here now to make a decision, so we can actually alleviate the problem and be done with it.
So if he moves out, what's left, the, is that the big issue wise? Michelle, um, if he moves out?
It should still get secured because he doesn't have proper permits, and he shouldn't go in because of safety issues. It should still get secured if you decide to do that. But like I said, he said he's gonna move out before and he has not. So even though you're telling him to move out, I don't think he's gonna do that. And I do believe that even if he gets the permit, he's gonna continue to live in it. And we're gonna keep getting, you have continued to live in it now, even though I've told you to move out. So, yes.
Let's not argue between the two of you.
I, I, I don't believe him.
Okay.
Cuz he hasn't shown that.
How, how about this, Michelle? Maybe we'll go ahead and give permission. If, if, if he moves back, we'll give you permission if need secure it. If he doesn't move back in, leave it as it is. If he, if he moves back in, put the plywood and take whatever steps are necessary.
Plywood is the securing, correct?
Securing, yes. Yeah. So you're telling me if he steps back in, come back and we can discuss about demoing?
No. Um, well, possibly, yeah.
Because then-
What I'm, I'm saying, don't put the plywood for now. We'll give you, we'll give you authority to put plywood if need be. You just don't put the plywood, but if he moves back in, put up the plywood, secure it.
So are you requiring him to show proof of residency somewhere? Because you're now telling me I need to go babysit him to see if he's living in this place.
I think we boarded up.
You boarded up. It's done.
Okay.
And then he can go and get the permits and go through the process, and once he actually gets the permits, pays the fees, then he has permission to go back in by obtaining it from me and the building department.
And he'll have a bunch of new plywood.
Yeah, sounds reasonable.
Fair enough.
What do we need, a motion? Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion that we secure the legal structure, like board up the windows. Um, it costs approximately fifteen hundred. And, um, that he needs to vacate the premises as part of it. And I think as far as encroachment permit, we'll probably handle that when we get to that point. Chuck, you think? Yeah.
Yeah, when, when the permits are being pulled, we'll, we'll work on that. That will not be a, a hiccup.
Okay.
Um, what would you like to give him as a timeframe to move out, so he knows that, so it's stated here? You wanna give him thirty days?
Yeah.
Thirty days is fine.
Thirty days.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay, second by Supervisor Cornell. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Opposed? Five zero. Okay, that one is complete. We're on to five K. Review and possible approval of the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five Board Supervisors Meeting minutes.
I have one change. I've already voiced that, so with that, I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Has your change the vote count on one of the?
Yes, yes. Yeah, my name was omitted. It's fine. I got it, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, who's the second? Supervisor Crew, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is five zero. What's that, sir?
Prove boarding up the, my windows and everything, did you?
Yes, we did.
You did?
In thirty days. You got thirty days.
In thirty days.
In, within thirty days? I have all the OSB that I've just bought and to redo the whole thing. And I could just do, do it myself. I could go over the windows. I could just leave the windows in, go over the top of them because they're set back in.
We're not taking the windows out. We're not doing anything.
No, I know that. I've seen, I've seen how you board, they just go over the top and bend it if need be, but.
If you want to board it up yourself, I don't think we care.
Yeah, but in thirty days, if it isn't done, we'll be there to board it up. So if you have it done before then and it's secured and it's unlivable, then.
It'll save you some money.
That sounds good. I get, I can replace most of it and, because a lot of it needs replacing. And maybe I'll get inspected and they'll say, if I didn't do it all, they'll say, hey, do it all. I'll find that out when I get there. So I'll do it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, October twenty-first at nine AM. Close session begins at eight thirty. Thank you.